Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 11th, 2019 City Council meeting. I'm going to go ahead and take a moment to go -- can you hear me in the back? No? A little louder? Is that better? All right. Welcome to the June 11th, 2019 City Council meeting. I'm going to go ahead and take a moment to go ahead and introduce everyone. So we have every -- all council members are present. Our -- I'm going to go ahead and start off the dais with our city attorney, Bill McClure. To his immediate right is our city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson. To her -- to my immediate left, her right is our mayor pro temp, Cecilia Taylor. To my right is council member Betsy Nash. To her right is council mayor Drew Combs. On the phone, we have council member Catherine Carlton. And then down off the dais is our city clerk, Judy Heron. If you have any -- if you wish to speak tonight on any item on the agenda, what I need you to do is please fill out a comment card in the back of the room and provide that to Ms. Heron, so we know that we know that you want to speak on that item. If everyone could go ahead and please rise right now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Because this is a special meeting, there is no general public comment to start the meeting. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. And are there any items that want to be polled on -- that you guys would like to poll on the consent calendar? Councilmember Carlton, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
No, I think I am good. Thank you.
Okay. I am going to pull D3 and take it after the -- take it and move it actually in order to after tonight's events, because it could impact D3. But the others, we can go ahead. If I can have a motion to move? Councilmember Nash has moved items D1 and D2. Do I have a second? Let's go ahead and vote. Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously with D3 removed.
All right. We can go ahead now and move on to regular business. Again, folks, if you have any comments that you'd like to go ahead and comment, the time to go ahead and turn them in is now. Our first regular business item is item E1, Direction to City Attorney on Whether to Draft an Interim Ordinance Imposing Temporary Moratorium on Development and Direction Regarding Scope of Potential Temporary Moratorium. At this time, our Assistant City Attorney, Kara Silver, will make the presentation. And she'll be -- Deanna, I'm sorry. Your title is escaping me. It's not on the -- I want to make sure I specifically provide that.
Sure. The Assistant Community Development Director.
Thanks. Ms. Deanna Chau will be assisting. Ms. Silver.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'll be presenting on the consideration of a request to impose a development moratorium. In terms of the discussion tonight, we're going to go into some background surrounding this proposal. We'll talk about the moratorium laws and procedures. We will summarize the council members' request to impose a development moratorium and then solicit your input and direction to the city attorney in terms of drafting issues. So the input that we would like this evening is the first threshold question is whether the city council would like to direct the city attorney to draft a moratorium. If so, the city council should give us direction on various issues, including the applicability of the moratorium, the areas of town, any exceptions that should be included. We would also solicit input on the scope of the general plan, specific plan, or other land use plans that you would like to further study while the moratorium is underway. We also suggest that you appoint a subcommittee to work with the city attorney and the community development director to help draft the moratorium. We would also solicit input on the city council adopted priorities and work plan and how the moratorium would impact that. And then finally, if the council does not move forward with a moratorium, they may want to consider other alternatives to a moratorium. So in terms of background, there are three areas of law that come into play in this discussion. First is a concept called the General Plan Consistency Requirement. And under state law, which of course the city is bound by, all zoning ordinances must be consistent with the general plan and any specific plans that are adopted. And so this is typically called vertical consistency. And so if tonight you think about changing a general plan policy, or a specific plan policy, or a zoning ordinance, you want to consider that all of these three different documents must be consistent. And so even if you change one document, you may have to change other documents. The second issue that comes into play is housing element law. And under housing element law, state law requires each city to designate adequate sites to accommodate the development of new housing to satisfy projected population growth. Housing elements are updated on an eight-year cycle, and cities are given their share of what is called the Regional Housing Need Allocation, typically referred to as RENA. And they must satisfy and identify appropriate sites to satisfy their RENA allocation. In this case, Menlo Park, for the current eight-year cycle, was given the RENA allocation of 655 units. If the city, in connection with other planning processes, takes away or reduces the density of any of the housing sites that are currently on the city's inventory, state housing law requires that the city must identify other appropriate sites within the city that will accommodate the equivalent number of housing units that are taken off the inventory. Any changes to the RENA allocation must be approved by the state, the Housing and Community Development Department, or HCD, as it's referred to. The third area that we will be discussing in detail tonight is the concept of a development moratorium, which is governed and preempted by state law. The procedures are set forth in state law. State law prescribes a specific process for imposing a moratorium. And generally, moratoriums are used when the city council anticipates a major shift in development policy that could be impacted by pending development applications that it is receiving. So in terms of Menlo Park's planning efforts to date, we thought it would be helpful to go into some background on what the existing policies we have in place. So we've listed these chronologically. First of all, as I mentioned, we have the housing element for the 2015 through 2023 RENA housing element period. That housing element was certified by HCD on April 16th, 2014, and was subject to a fair amount of public process. As I mentioned, the city's current share of the RENA is 655 units, which the housing element took into account. Also, as I mentioned, any updates to the housing element must be approved by HCD under a recertification process. Next, in order chronologically, the city has the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. That was adopted in June of 2012, and it was updated in 2014. That process took approximately five years to finalize the plan. There was a two-year or so visioning process, and then three years of public outreach and plan adoption. The city spent approximately $1.7 million, inclusive of staff costs, on the development of that plan. The third policy framework that we have, of course, is the Connect Menlo General Plan Update, and that was adopted in November 2016. The current update, the 2016 update, did not update all of the elements of the general plan, but instead just updated the circulation and the land use elements. That process took over two years, and about 65 public meetings were conducted, and the total cost exclusive of staff cost was $1.7 million to prepare that general plan. The city currently has approximately $233,000 budgeted for general plan maintenance and updates that it anticipates. The final framework that we have is the zoning code. That was recently amended in December 2016 to add three new zoning districts, which were identified in Connect Menlo and were designed to implement the general plan. So now we're going to get into a moratorium. And what is a moratorium? It is an exercise of police powers to temporarily suspend development approvals. It is a temporary measure, and it prohibits uses that may be in conflict with a contemplated general plan, specific plan, or zoning code proposal that the city is either currently considering or which it plans to consider within a reasonable time following adoption of a moratorium. It is important to note that moratoriums are exceptions to the zoning process. The Planning Commission typically will review general plan, specific plan, and zoning code updates. But with a moratorium, this is an ordinance that goes directly to the city council, and it typically does not have a review and recommendation by the Planning Commission. Also, because of the urgency nature of a moratorium, the public process on a moratorium is not as extensive. There are required findings for a moratorium ordinance, and those findings are that there is a current and immediate threat to public health, safety, or welfare, and that the approval of additional projects would result in that threat to public health, safety, or welfare. There are also additional findings that must be made when adopting a moratorium that affects multifamily housing projects. And a multifamily housing project is defined as any new project that would consist of at least one-third of the square footage dedicated to housing. So multifamily housing projects can also include mixed-use projects. To impose a moratorium on multifamily housing projects, the housing project would have to have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety. You'll notice that the welfare finding is not available for housing project moratorium. And the statute defines what a specific adverse impact is. It must be significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable, and it must be based on objective, identified, written, public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date of the moratorium. You also must make a second finding that the moratorium is necessary to mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact, and you must make a third finding that no feasible alternative is available to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact with a less burdensome effect, other than the adoption of the moratorium. In terms of moratorium procedures, there are two different procedures for adopting a moratorium. The first procedure is when there is no public notice, and this is unusual. If there's no public notice, then the original moratorium goes into effect for 45 days. It may be extended for up to 10 months and 15 days. And then a second extension is also available for up to one additional year. More typically, the moratorium is adopted as a non-urgency measure following public notice. And in that case, there is a 45-day initial period, and then the ordinance may be extended for up to 22 months and 15 days by the city council. So under both of these procedures, the moratorium can last no longer than two years. Additional moratorium procedures prescribed by state law is that the original 45-day moratorium and each one of the subsequent extensions requires a four-fifths vote of the city council. The moratorium, as I mentioned, takes effect immediately, which is different than most of your typical ordinances. It doesn't require a first and second reading, and it does not require the 30-day referendum period. It may be adopted at either a regular or special meeting, which is also different than most ordinances. And the city council must issue a written report following the adoption of the moratorium describing the particular measures taken to address the moratorium conditions. And this report must be filed by the city council 10 days before expiration of each moratorium period. This is called the 10-day report. The ordinance -- the moratorium ordinance may not prohibit the submittal or processing of permits, which is an important point. Applicants are still permitted to submit permits, and the city is required to process those permits. However, if the moratorium is in effect, the city does not actually issue the permit until the moratorium has expired. The projects that are subject to a development agreement or which have building permits are generally exempt from a moratorium. That is because those types of projects have vested rights to develop, and so they are not subject to a moratorium. And as I mentioned, moratorium may not exceed two years. So on June 5th of this month, Vice Mayor Taylor and council member Nash submitted a request to the mayor to agendize a request for a moratorium. That request is attached to the staff report. We'll summarize it here, and of course, the council members can fill in and supplement our explanation. The purpose of the moratorium was threefold, as identified in the letter. The first purpose was to ensure that the city's general plan and the El Camino Real and Downtown Specific Plan, which, as I mentioned, are the city's guiding documents, still reflect current community values. Obviously, there has been a rapid development period. There have been housing issues that have been pervasive in the Bay Area and in California in general, and the council members wanted to ensure that the city's guiding documents still reflect community values. Second, the letter requested that the stated purpose was to consider additional locations and opportunities within the city for more housing. This, again, is a result and outgrowth of the current housing crisis that we are facing in California, and the council members wanted to ensure that the city's opportunities for housing were adequate. And then finally, with respect to District 1, where there has been heavy development and redevelopment, the council members wanted to study the unintended consequences of that development, such as housing displacement and strains on existing infrastructure. So the council member's proposed action was twofold. First of all, the council members requested a temporary suspension citywide, so the moratorium would apply citywide, as to all new non-residential construction, including hotels, and any increased floor area ratio or new square footage for existing non-residential construction, including hotels. So the citywide moratorium, it's important to note, would not apply to residential units, and so the second set of housing-related findings would not be required. Then with respect to the District 1 proposal, there was an additional request for a, again, a temporary moratorium. And this moratorium in District 1 only would apply to all new residential construction on developments containing over 100 units and any increased square footage, or FAR, for existing residential developments containing over 100 units. For this part of the moratorium request, the council would have to make the special housing findings. So the June 5th memo also suggested some moratorium findings. Some of the findings that we've identified here on this slide were to -- the purpose and the -- purpose for the moratorium was to analyze the jobs-housing imbalance and do that by district, to review the zoning and how and where additional housing can be encouraged, to analyze development caps in the remaining allowable net new development citywide, to analyze development revenues and expenditures, to analyze the impacts of development by the type of development. And on the bottom of this slide is the required finding for the citywide component of the moratorium. And again, as we stated, that is the one that relates to the immediate threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Then the second component of the moratorium, which would require the special housing findings, in the memo, there were some additional findings that were proposed for District 1, and those findings related to the unprecedented development and influx of traffic, the sensitive population that currently exists in District 1, and the impact that further development would have on that population, especially in relation to the lack of affordable housing, which causes displacement, and also with respect to the vulnerable senior demographic that exists currently in District 1. Also, the memo pointed to the lack of local quality education in District 1. Another finding was the location of District 1 in the middle of major roadways with environmental and physical impacts, such as air quality, traffic gridlock, and a flood zone. And then finally, historical underinvestment of infrastructure. And again, we've put up here the findings for the multifamily component of the moratorium. So in terms of the direction to the city attorney, we are first, as a threshold question, asking you whether you want us to draft a moratorium ordinance. If so, what should the scope of the moratorium be? We're also asking whether you think that there should be any projects that are exempt, such as projects that are currently in the pipeline. And we have identified certain projects that are in the pipeline in the memo that was attached as Exhibit B to the staff report. We have also received some comments on specific projects on that memo. We have updated the memo to respond to some of those comments, and so we have put an updated memo at places and on the public table with incorporated comments that we have received to date from the public. It is important to note that the pending projects list is, of course, an iterative list, and we will expect changes to that list over time. Another question we're asking is, should the moratorium cover gross square footage, or should it apply to net new square footage? We are also asking about the scope of the general plan, or specific plan, or any zoning regulations that you would like us to study while the moratorium is in place. We are asking for appointment of a subcommittee to work with us on the development of the moratorium, should you choose to go forward. We're also asking whether you would like to schedule the reading on the moratorium for a regular meeting or conduct a special meeting on this issue. And then we are asking for some feedback on how this initiative would affect our current adopted -- city council adopted priorities and work plan. And finally, asking whether there are any alternatives to a moratorium that you would like to consider if you do choose not to direct us to draft a moratorium. And that concludes the staff report.
Could you just put that last slide up there one more time? I think we're all still taking notes. Okay. At this time, does anyone have any questions for staff before we open public comment? Councilmember Carlton, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Nash.
Hi. Thank you for the report. The first question I have is, are we considering this as two separate moratoriums or as one moratorium? Because it's two, sort of two separate directions that we need to give the council, one citywide and one for District 1.
The moratorium could be drafted, either a separate moratorium, and they could even be on separate schedules. You might want to have a shorter moratorium for one or the other, or it could be drafted as a single moratorium. The choice is up to you.
I would like to propose that we have two separate moratoriums, one on citywide for non-residential, and the other for District 1 residential over 100 units. And we'll further discuss that later, but at least in thinking about it, that it would be two separate moratoriums. I guess the next question that I have is, some of the questions that you have are for information that we need to still get from -- and that's actually one of the reasons for the moratorium is for information gathering. So do all of these -- at what point do we need to pin these down? I assume that the subcommittee can get the information and make a recommendation, and that it actually could be part of what comes back to council if we decide to go in that direction.
Yes, that's absolutely true. And we would expect also that you would collect testimony and evidence at this particular hearing as well that will help you answer some of these questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Folks, if you want to take a moment, go ahead. We've got plenty of space here in the front. If you want to go ahead and come sit down, it could be a long time standing before comments are called. If you have comment cards, go ahead and please do provide them to the clerk. But the whole front row is available, some spaces behind it. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment. So just some housekeeping rules on public comment. I expect that people have strong opinions tonight. I'm going to ask folks to please refrain from clapping, cheering, jeering, yelling out. We want to keep a respectful decorum, so everyone feels safe and comfortable sharing their opinions while they're at their microphone. Secondarily, I just want to remind everybody to never underestimate Secondarily, I just want to remind everybody to never underestimate the power of a sharp mind, a sincere heart, and a kind voice. It goes much further with us, because we can actually hear what you're saying. With that, we're going to go ahead and call our first public speaker this evening, Clem Maloney.
My name is Clem Maloney. I'm a 40-year homeowner in the Willows neighborhood, a former high school teacher, and the parent of a high school teacher. I'm speaking tonight regarding the housing part of the proposed moratorium. I'm supporting increased Menlo Park housing availability. The reasons are, first, that keeping more homes and apartments affordable will be the result of building more housing, greater availability of housing. Second, the positive impacts of building more homes locally include both, that it allows our neighbors and coworkers and kids to continue to live here, and also, more homes for lease will keep rents under control. Third, low and moderate-income families are really us here in the room, teachers, medical workers, service workers, blue-collar jobs, seniors. So, in conclusion, housing is a shared public concern. It's part of our society's values. We have been hearing more and more from community input that there is a widening support for new policies to solve our housing crisis, policies to incentivize the construction of more homes locally in order to increase the availability of that housing. Therefore, I feel that any moratorium on building new housing is a mistake, that housing availability is a key part of the solution, and what I'm recommending tonight is that housing proposals which are not tied to office development proposals should be exempt from any moratorium on housing that's under consideration. Thank you to you, council, and city staff for the hard work you do to promote solutions to all of our community needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Our next speaker this evening is Brad, and I apologize, one of the letters in your name is missing. Ray Izin? Zane? Thanks, Brad, I appreciate it.
So, I want to thank the council for giving me a chance to speak. I'm a resident of East Palo Alto. I live on Newbridge Street, though, and I've been living on the peninsula for the past six years. I've worked as a teacher for 20 years, and my past six years teaching up here on the peninsula has been a great experience. One thing that's interesting about that experience, though, that I know is on the mind of a lot of people in here, is in those six years, I've seen kind of the traffic and congestion, and just the concentration of people here increased to the point that as a coach, for example, most of my athletes on Tuesday, Thursday for wrestling matches have to miss their, you know, their classes after lunch, because it takes so long just to get to our local schools to compete. So, I do know that traffic congestion, just the density of people here, is becoming something that's, most people would not expect to have seen, even with all the jobs coming in. That being said, I think that, you know, I'm going to use my, and if you were a student in my class, you would know that I mentioned wrestling a lot, I teach history, and I like to kind of use it in that way. The moratorium that you guys are coming up with, though, gives you guys an interesting amount of leverage. And I bring up leverage, because in wrestling, you need leverage to beat your opponents. I mean, that's how Odysseus P. Ajax, the biggest and mightiest of all the Greeks, even though he was much smaller, he had leverage on him. You guys, this gives you leverage, I think, to kind of use future development here in Menlo Park, and my community as well, to kind of put a requirement on it, not just for, you know, below-market-rate housing, but, you know, as Mr., the previous speaker mentioned, housing for teachers. You know, we lose, I'd say, and I teach at Sequoia High School, we lose between five to 10 teachers and staff a year moving out of the area to find affordable housing. I was in that boat this past year. I was very lucky to find a place that I could afford in East Palo Alto. If not, I would have been probably moving out of the area, or driving from a very far point into this area, adding to the traffic. I think if you guys could use this project to actually get out of the 1,500 units, like 100 units, that would be given to the school districts to divide among employees, that would be probably a way to kind of ensure, not only are we building a stronger community with teachers and educators interacting with the families and children that they teach on a daily basis, but we're also kind of, you know, taking away some of that congestion, because the districts could also maybe coordinate to bring buses to get under the school sites, you know, since buses are kind of going through our community all the time, taking kids to various districts in and around the peninsula, do the same thing for teachers. So, you know, if you guys are going to, you know, use this moratorium in a way, I think that could be a way to get more teacher housing in developments that do go on in Menlo Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Angie Evans.
So, I'm going to speak from, I wrote everything down, because I think, like many of you, I don't have air conditioning, so I have not slept for like three days. So, I'm going to read off this paper. All right. So, I work for the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We're an organization whose aim is to get more affordable housing. When we think about our cities, our communities really, we imagine a place where all of our residents are living in safe, affordable housing, everywhere. Right now, we have thousands of people living on the streets throughout San Mateo County. They're cramped into expensive homes. We all know people who are piled into smaller and smaller spaces. They're sitting on wait lists with few affordable homes that have been produced over the recent years, and that's why the Housing Leadership Council takes this moratorium on housing so seriously. The housing crisis didn't happen any more accidentally than the segregation of Menlo Park. And for years, we've approved tens of thousands of jobs without keeping housing production up. We've maintained exclusionary zoning in places like downtown by maintaining height and density restrictions, and we focused our development in a neighborhood that is historically disenfranchised. But it doesn't have to be that way. I'm trying to focus on solutions. HLC would like to see this council identify and incentivize more sites downtown for affordable homes. We need to change the height limits and increase density to make space for all income levels in every neighborhood. This city has some of the best schools in the country, but they're only available to a segment of our kids. All of our residents deserve equal access to our resources. So, whether you move forward on the moratorium or not, we really hope you're going to focus on solutions that make it more affordable, not less, including exempting affordable housing developments. Thank you for your time on this difficult issue. I know this is just the beginning.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Gail Wilkerson.
Hello, I'm Gail Wilkerson, resident since 1955, when it was, 101 was a two-lane, no traffic. The biggest traffic problem we had was pulling in where the old Bell Haven motel stop sign, and we had to wait till everybody go by. I think there should be a moratorium, Redwood City, Menlo Park, and East Palo Alto. I understand builders have to make money, and that's the way they make their money. But they must be under a structure of law and order. You can find cranes all up and down El Camino Real and other places. I say this because the quality of life, when I lived at 1351 Henderson Avenue, was totally different back then, and I know progress has to happen. I know there is always going to be a change, but I feel like the brakes should be pumped, slow down a little bit. It kind of devastated me when I saw the old redwood trees at 101 and Willow Road chopped down. I mean, they were older than I was, and I rather trees than traffic. Last week, on my birthday, I must be getting old, spent time at a council meeting in East Palo Alto, and I asked for a moratorium there, because I went to a mandatory meeting where they bought the old room, that chemical place, and they still haven't cleaned it up, and that place has been spewing chemicals since 1950. And we asked about the traffic, because he says it was going to be like five buildings, eight stories, and it's going to bring in 5,000 to 8,000 more cars. That's a lot of cars. And our question, when we asked him about that, his quirk to us was, well, you solve, being the murder capital of the United States, you can solve the traffic. And then our light bulbs kind of went off, and this developer, he didn't care, he just wanted to make money. There's a talk about Bart coming out and going along the bay, some kind of railway. I think everything should stop until they build that, or what they've been talking about for 20 years, coming off of Dunbarton Bridge and going, hooking up behind EPA 2101. I think all that should happen before anything else is built. So, I, oh, wow, thank God, make it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Barry Hathaway.
Good evening, and thank you for that great presentation. It really helped to show what a complex issue this is, and how thorny it is, and how many different perspectives there will be. My name is Barry Hathaway, and I'm the CEO of Job Train. It's a 50-year-old nonprofit organization that works here in Menlo Park to help low-income people who are out of work or in low-wage jobs get started in careers that can sustain them for the long term, help them achieve economic sustainability. And I look at, I look at our community, and we're experts in workforce development, not housing, but we know that housing and jobs must go together. We know that if I'm, if I'm low-income and getting started in a new career, and my wages are good but still not enough, I need access to affordable housing. And we know that we all want, whether I'm an employer, or I'm a person who lives in this community, I want to live and work in the same community, because that's just better for everybody. So, I worry about a moratorium that puts a pause on jobs growth while it's building housing growth. I think we need both, and so I encourage you to think about how we can strike a balance here, how we can build more housing, which we desperately need. In our space, housing is so inextricably linked to poverty and to being low-income. When you're low-income, you can't afford housing, you have to move out of the area. So, I just want, I just want to say, we want jobs, and we want housing, and the trick is going to be to find that delicate balance. And I appreciate, I want to say, I appreciate very much how complicated this topic is, and that we're going to have all different perspectives and opinions. I just hope that in the end, we can strike that right balance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Phil Gutierrez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the council. Thank you for your time, and this air conditioning, I agree. This is a very complicated issue. I'm speaking in my role as head of school at Mid Peninsula High School. We're at 1340 Willow Road. We share a fence with the property that will become Willow Village, and so all the issues of density and traffic and housing that you've heard before hit us very, very close to home. I worry about my teachers living in the neighborhood, and, you know, paying them salaries and whatnot. For 20 years, we've been on Willow Road, and we're proud members of this community, although we're an independent high school that has student enrollment from all over the peninsula. We're very committed to serving families in East Menlo Park and East Palo Alto, with most of our financial aid directed to those families, because we want to make a difference where we are. I will say Signature Development Group and Facebook have been wonderful collaborators. They've been attentive to our concerns, and they've listened to our needs. Facebook has agreed to help fund some kids in the neighborhood, and we're appreciative of that. I understand, believe me, the reasons for the moratorium. I do question if it's the best route to take. Communication, collaboration might get us a lot further to address all these very, very complicated competing interests rather than a moratorium, but thank you for your time, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Nancy Edelson.
Good evening, council members. I've been living in East Palo Alto on the eastern border for 33 years, and served on the East Palo Alto Public Works and Transportation Commission for around 15 years. And I remember at one time, when there was a traffic problem on Willow Road developing, that we had open discussions between, you know, Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, and that's, around that time, I think that we opened up Bayfront Expressway. That was kind of our solution to the traffic problem. And then, and then Facebook came in, and started to develop along this corridor that was supposed to alleviate some of our traffic problems. And the immensity of the Facebook development has turned East Palo Alto and East Menlo Park, you know, upside down. We have this huge housing problem, quality of life. Environmentally, we surrounded, like, on the sides of a box by major arteries, I mean, huge major arteries, and they are sensitive populations. I mean, it, there was a time when, you know, that's where people who were blue-collar workers lived, in these communities. These were the places that people could afford. Now, we don't have that. We don't even have that kind of place. So, I feel like we need to, we need to have, to me, we need to have a longer moratorium. We need not to move so fast, because the damage that's been done already in terms of public health and, and quality of life, and displacement and homelessness is just, is huge. The development of Willow Village, you have this artery that's already a parking lot. It's already congested, and that you're going to have in and out on the same road. We need, there's places around the world where, before development occurs, they require infrastructure, and I feel like that's the way we need to go. We don't need to get our EIRs and have them say, oh, such and such, we're going to mitigate. We're going to mitigate this, we're going to mitigate that. We need to mitigate before we build. We need to build, like the previous person said, we need to build public transportation infrastructure before any more business development occurs. And for housing, we, we need low-income housing. We need to provide homes for the people that have been displaced from communities they lived in for a long time. And, and also, I lived for a few years in Pinole, and across the valley from where I lived, there was a factory. I don't know, at one time, it was a fertilizer factory, whatever, but they built homes on, around their factory. If we could develop buildings, corporations and businesses that build homes for their workers at the same site, to me, that's perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Edelson, I appreciate it. Our next speaker this evening is David Ehrenhardt.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is David Ehrenhardt, I'm a member of the Bell Haven community.
Mr. Ehrenhardt, if you could pull the mic closer to you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm a member of the Bell Haven community. I want to speak in support of, I guess, the two moratoria that were proposed, and for one specific reason. Right now, the traffic is completely out of control in that area. I can't imagine any more development in the area that does not deal with this transportation. And I see that as being the core issue, because it affects the noise and pollution in terms of public health, it affects the safety in terms of responsiveness for emergency services moving through the area, moving in and out of the area, and the basic quality of life and welfare. And speaking of amenities, and speaking of a variety of other things, really is simply trying to deal with the core issue, which is the fact that the transportation infrastructure within that area, for the current population, the current pass-through traffic from the, from the East Bay is unreasonable now, and I fully support putting the brakes on any more development until there is a rational and very clear plan to deal with the traffic issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ehrenhardt. Our next speaker this evening is Leonard Basoko.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Leonard Basoko. I'm a representative of Carpenters Local Union 217 for San Mateo County. I am speaking on behalf of- I am speaking on behalf of 39,000 carpenter men and women across Northern California, including the 50 members and their families who live here in Menlo Park. We are here today to speak in opposition to the proposed development moratorium. Moratoriums only serve one purpose, to prevent investment in our city, in our city's infrastructure. If implemented, will result in tax increases necessary to make up for the lack of investment in our city and inability to improve our infrastructure and services. Furthermore, will result in service reductions that come from the inevitable revenue losses that will force staff cuts. Additionally, moratoriums will result in declining revenue to already challenged school financing, which will only exacerbate our challenges and preclude any ability for us to plan and invest to improve them. More importantly, we need to bring stability to our housing and jobs imbalance. We cannot do this with a moratorium in place. According to the most recent survey by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, California need to build 180,000 homes per year through 2025. It's been building 80,000. The current deficit of needed housing in the state is about 3.5 million units with little hope of closing the gap soon. Menlo Park needs to continue to be a part of the solution. Enclosing the Carpenters Union respectfully asks you to reconsider moving forward with a development moratorium. The need for housing and local jobs, which turn into careers, are too important and should not be overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Dennis Martin. Good evening, Mr. Martin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dennis Martin, speaking on behalf of BIA Bay Area, a regional association of home builders, multifamily residential developers, and all the associated industries that feed into residential development. As elaborated on in our letter, BIA opposes the imposition of a moratorium, especially on housing. A development moratorium is an extreme action. It sends the wrong message to developers and investors, as well as to your neighbors and the region, that despite previous promises contained in Connect Menlo, the M2 zoning code update, the El Camino downtown plans, all bets are off. Uncertainty, keep in mind, is an existential threat to development investment. California, and particularly the Bay Area, including Menlo Park, are all in the midst of an acute housing crisis. Any moratorium on residential building is entirely counterproductive to solving this significant problem. Additionally, the proposed action punishes responsible developers who have worked closely with the city to craft projects that meet the needs and plans of the city. By and large, many of the issues that have been raised have already been analyzed, planned, and documented during the two-year Connect Menlo process that is completed just a little over two years ago. No basis exists to make the necessary statutory findings of immediate threat to public health, safety, or welfare. Furthermore, a moratorium must be adopted by four-fifths vote, precisely because it is extreme action. Now, staff has done an excellent job of informing the council of the very rigorous requirements of adopting a moratorium, not to mention the onerous burden and costs it would place on the city to implement. As staff points out, even if a moratorium were adopted, the city would be obligated legally to continue to review, comment on, and circulate for public review any submitted housing project applications and documentation. This means that the city must continue to process new and already submitted applications for market-rate, affordable, mixed-use projects, as well as pursue the preparation of environmental impact reports to evaluate the impacts of these projects. The city should also be aware of actions that the state has taken recently with regards to cities that fail to honor their commitment to build housing. And I just call your attention to the case of Huntington Beach that the state has sued this year. I can tell you that, from experience, that HCD will get into the city's business and place additional burden on the city should you adopt a moratorium. Surely, the majority of the council tonight will decide that Menlo Park should not send the wrong message to its investors, citizens, the public, the region. A moratorium will be seen across the area for exactly what it is, a nimby effort to stop the orderly evolution and development of Silicon Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Nathan Ho.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and honorable council members. I am Nathan Ho, Senior Director for Housing Policy at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. Thank you for your public service to the city of Menlo Park and in the region. As you may know, the leadership group was founded 40 years ago by David Packard of Hewlett-Packard. And today, the leadership group is driven by more than 330 CEOs, senior executives, who proactively tackle issues to improve our communities and strengthen our economy, including a focus on housing and community development. I share tonight the leadership group's serious concern with a proposed citywide moratorium on non-residential development and density increases of FAR for non-residential projects as well. Our communities are deep in a housing crisis. Here in San Mateo County, home prices have more than doubled over the past 10 years, from 528,000 in 2009 to 1.22 million today. Mega commutes are a common acceptance in our region, and every week, it seems, we are saying goodbye to friends and family as they move out of the Bay Area. We need to be coming together collectively to thoughtfully build more housing in all of our communities. The city's general plan and specific plan processes are the results of years of robust stakeholder engagement, community input, and environmental impact studies. They represent the community's vision for the future. And for builders, these plans represent a good face signaling by the city and the community that investment is welcome and partnership in achieving this vision is desired. A balance of non-residential and residential development is necessary for our communities to provide the desperately needed homes to emerge from our crisis. A moratorium of any kind risks long-term effects for both non-residential and housing development. We respectfully ask the city council to not take the path that could lead down to a moratorium. We thank you for your consideration and again, for your public service.
Thank you, Mr. Ho. Our next speaker this evening is Matt Henry. Good evening, Mr. Henry.
My name is Matt Henry. I live in Menlo Park in District One. Bellhaven right now has four problems: jobs, housing, traffic, and development. These issues are so entangled that it's hard to get a handle on one because it so affects the other. The size and the geographic shape of Menlo Park does contribute to the problem because in other communities, it's a traffic problem. But the basic driver of all these problems stems from overdevelopment. In District One, all four of these problems, these issues, have combined. There's too many projects, they're coming too fast. That's why this mess keeps growing. We must stop this merry-go-round and reassess what we're doing, and we call it a moratorium. Right now, District One is overwhelmed, and then at the same time, the city has a surplus. This city gets a lot of its revenue from residential property tax and commercial development, but the impact left behind from these two revenue generators is very different. Bellhaven is suffering because of the negative consequences of commercial development. A city manager's, I mean, a city administrator's top assignment is to maintain a delicate balance between residential harmony and commercial development while upholding good quality of life for the city. It's really not an easy balancing act, but that's the job. In my opinion, the previous city administrator did not maintain the proper balance. In fact, he destroyed it. But I will admit, he left the city's piggy bank overflowing. So I guess it comes down to a question of values: residence or revenue? What and who does Menlo Park value? I guess we're going to find out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Our next speaker this evening is Brielle Jeanc. Good evening, Ms. Jeanc.
Hello. First, I want to really hand it to council members Nash and Taylor for daring to bring up the M-word. It was really brave. It shouldn't have been brave, but it really was. And I can understand why they really had to do it. We're finally now feeling the repercussions of so much development that had no housing. And it started with Bohannon, who gave us 900,000 square feet of office and not one housing unit. That opened the door. And the reason that that was so popular is because it was over there. It wasn't here. It wasn't on the West Side. Even the campaign material talks about, you won't get the traffic because it's over there. Well, tonight, I want to talk about fairness. The question I want to raise is, has the growth in the city been fair? The office and housing that's allowed on the East Side would be quickly rejected on the West Side of town. Could this council approve a 1.75 million square foot office on El Camino Real and escape with their lives? It couldn't have happened. Look at the fuss that we put up over Stanford and Greenheart. So let's take one little element about housing. The zoning on the West Side allows for 40 housing units an acre, and it's been that number for years. But the zoning on the East Side allows for 100 housing units per acre. What's the difference? If 100 units an acre is reasonable, then why not rezone the downtown area for that kind of density? If the West Side of town doesn't want 100 units, why should the East Side of town want it? Bellhaven finally has a seat at the table. We need to listen to this new voice. What I hear is that Bellhaven has not been treated fairly. There have been too many needs assessment studies with little follow-up. There's been too many promises of jobs in Bellhaven, too many promises of a grocery store, too many promises of a bank and a pharmacy. And today, we got a grocery store that's been dangling again, you know? But this time, it comes with nine more office buildings and 1,500 housing units. Bellhaven already has 700 housing units, and they're adjusting to that. It's no wonder that Bellhaven's discouraged. I hope this council takes this moment, as you did, Mayor Mueller, when you did not approve the general plan because the infrastructure was not there. And there's been no improvement on the infrastructure since then.
All right. Mr. Schmidt, you are next. I'm not sure if you wanted to take your three minutes.
I'll just take two minutes, hopefully less. Steve Schmidt, 43-year resident of the Willows. And a kind of guiding principle I've had in my years of being a public servant and a player in the city of Menlo Park is, don't make things worse. And I think as long as there are no stops or there's not a moratorium on commercial development in Menlo Park, things are going to be worse. We will never catch up with our housing deficit if office development continues the way it's being, the way it's continuing now and the way it's continuing to be approved. So when you consider the moratoria, just remember something: don't make it worse. And I support council members Taylor and Nash in their efforts to correct a very unbalanced situation. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, Ms. Jeanc, when I was raising my finger to you, I was trying to signal to you just for a second that your husband was trying to donate time to you so you could keep speaking, so I wanted to give him credit for that. Okay. Our next speaker this evening is Ms. Nina Woke.
Hi. Still Nina Woke, still Bellhaven, since about the creation of the universe. I guess since nobody else is using the R-word and all the points have been made about all the terrible things that have happened over there, it's very gratifying to see a city council on, which there's a significant number of faces that are significant shade of brown. It has been a long time since city council has represented our side of town or has represented pretty much anything except white people, speaking as somebody who is white myself by general acclaim. I'm tired of city councils that bat at the shiny thing. It's what everybody else said. The infrastructure is not there. The traffic is, the pollution is, the crowding is, the inability of emergency vehicles to get through in an emergency is. And it's due to a legacy of racism. I want to see something done about that. And I get really angry when I hear people talking about this wonderful public process that represented the public in this wonderful general plan, in which for some reason, it seems like nobody on my side of town ever got a word in edgeways and how come we aren't part of the public? And yeah, it's been hot and it's hard for me to make any more sense than that. So we need to make a lot of changes, and I don't see how they can begin to be made while things are getting worse, like Steve Schmidt said. Got to stop it now in order to have time to think.
Thank you, Ms. Woke. Our next speaker this evening is Rose Bickerstaff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, how did we get to this point? A lot of us know, and a lot of people behind me have different reasons. But I'm here just to say that we must have a moratorium. We can't get around it. I know there's a lot of developers, and that's what they do, develop. But all you have to do, if you don't want a moratorium, take District One out of the equation because we cannot go any further. We have a runaway train and no one's changing the tracks. We're teetering over the cliff. We must stop. And I hear people say, oh, we can talk. There's no more talking. We've heard everything anyone could possibly hear. And I can say to you, council, we're depending on you. So much so, I keep you on a little prayer list by my bed every night. I don't say the same prayer because God doesn't have Alzheimer's, but he knows what I'm thinking about. And I want to tell you that we are going in the right direction. If we do the moratorium, then we can stop and we can regroup and we can organize and see where we are going. Because the former city manager has a template that I hope we don't continue to use. We need to throw it away because it did us zero good. We can't keep going and doing the same thing. It's idiotic. Of course, some may say insane, but we must pause But we must pause, and stop, and think about all the pressure that we're putting in District One. Yeah, I keep hearing housing. Yes, we need housing. It's a regional problem. Our little community can't be stretched. I don't care how many units you put there. The same amount of land is going to still remain. So take District One out of the equation. The developments won't, nothing is going to happen to them. They just go find someplace else, or do something differently. But I can say that where this last proposal is, is proposed to be, we heard the presentation the other night, across the street is a school who needs 200 parking spaces. What sense does that make? I don't care if people want to put 500 units on one acre. You have the power to stop it, although some of your power has been stripped away, and we need to talk about that another day. Thank you very much, and please vote to make things right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bickerstaff. Our next speaker this evening is Segar Batel.
Good evening, council. My comments are specific to the downtown specific plan. I want to share a few different perspectives on the matter. As a resident, my father and I both live in Menlo Park and are reminded daily of the massive amount of development in our area. My mother waits for morning traffic to clear because she's too afraid to drive. My fellow neighbors in the Willows and I worry about the cut-through traffic and the impact that hap, that, that our children, that bike to Laurel Elementary and Hillview Middle School feel. We are concerned with large corporate developers, or change in the look and feel of our community. I share the frustration that many of us feel. As a small business owner, I am concerned at the mention of a moratorium, which to me feels like an unrealistic way to deal with these issues. We, as a community, came together to create a downtown specific plan that set the guidelines for development along El Camino Real already. The city should honor its commitment to the specific plan in order to finish the process of creating a vibrant downtown. As a hotel operator with other hotels in the area, I can tell you that traffic along El Camino Real has very little to do with the development along El Camino Real. Redwood City and Mountain View are adding millions of square feet of commercial and residential development. Half the guests that stay at our hotel in Redwood City commute to Menlo Park and Stanford. By limiting growth, not only do we, not only will we not ease congestion, but we will have fewer resources at hand to deal with our real issues. California's housing problem will continue to worsen, and eventually, some version of State Bill 50 will be approved. A concern I have as a resident is that any moratorium in place would be overridden by SB 50, thus taking development control away from, away at a local level. It would be better for us to have sensible development plans in place to maintain that control locally. While the city is fortunate to enjoy a budget surplus for the time being, we still have an unfunded pension and difficulty hiring for many open positions for additional city staff. We are also fortunate to enjoy a high level of city-provided amenities and services, and hope that will continue to improve. These proposed developments will aid in our budget shortfalls and continue the quality of the city provided, of city, city-provided amenities. Instead of a blanket, blanket ban on all development, we should approach the problems with a nuanced and pragmatic plan for development, as well as dealing with specific issues such as traffic, which will help create a balanced approach to solving the issues we face as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Cheryl Bims. Good evening, Ms. Bims.
Good evening, council. And I just want to thank, thank you for making this issue a priority, and all of you doing what needed to be done to make that happen. I definitely support a moratorium at this time for multiple reasons. I'm a Menlo Park resident, and I live in District One, and I am living, breathing, and experiencing the fullness of development. However, the benefits, I have yet to see. And I'm aware that our city has a surplus right now. However, when it comes to mitigations, traffic mitigations, you name it, infrastructure improvements, I'm still searching for them. I think one critical issue, yes, housing is very important, but I think people have to really be fair in considering the fact, it's the distribution of housing in Menlo Park that's really the issue. You cannot do all of the development in one area and expect that same area to absorb all of the housing needs. However, currently and historically, the Bell Haven area has been the dumping ground, is what I'm going to say, for everything that the rest of Menlo Park did not want. And so to just, to continue that pattern and to pretend like, well, that's just how it is, we just, we can't, we don't live in that time anymore. And I can't stress enough to my city that somebody really has to wake up and do something quickly. And I do want to say, for the record, it is unsafe in our neighborhood. I will say that again. It is unsafe in our community. The traffic is not being mitigated. The air quality, I won't say too much right now, but I know what to do with that information right now also. So I think if anyone is wise, we would just take a pause. Don't get so scared about the word "moratorium." It would be wise to take a pause. Developers, you'll be okay. A lot of you are working so many projects all over this peninsula and country, I'm sure you can figure out how to shift your resources around. I recently went to the Gray Star presentation about the 483 units. And if you wonder how people keep getting bamboozled, imagine this. Okay, we want to build 483 units. We want you to tell us what you like about our project. That was the premise, and then they wanted to break us into groups. And we're like, no, we don't need to break into groups yet because we don't want that project, number one. But then, number two, it's 483 units on 4.83 acres. So that is truly 100 units per acre. The other project they've done was 30 units per acre, and that's on Haven Avenue. So I encourage everyone to go take a look at that, and then imagine 100 units on 4.83 acres. But we also had to encourage them to mention the fact that it's directly across from the new high school that's being built. See, this is irresponsible development. I really believe our city can do a lot better. I know the talent is here, and I really encourage people to have the courage to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bims. Our next speaker this evening is Julie Shanson.
Thank you, council members. I'm here in support of council members Taylor and Nash and the moratorium. I am finding what I'm looking for. More than the legal rules, the process of pausing gives us as a city a chance to review upcoming projects through a lens of equity. The current construction has had enormous impacts, health, safety, quality of life, to the whole area, but especially to the residents of District One, who have to plan their lives around when they can get in and out of their neighborhood. And we plan our lives, right? We don't have meetings over there because no one can get there at 6 o'clock at night. We need to acknowledge the fact that essential services due as a part of the development agreements have not materialized. And the city has already approved more development of new housing and more offices in District One. We need to have a clearer vision of what the future will hold for the people who are most impacted, and when they will see the benefits that have been promised. Ideally, this pause will get us to rethink what we want downtown and to rezone for higher density. What's good in District One should be good downtown, right? We need development near great schools, library, grocery stores, pharmacies, banks, transportation, and at the same time, looking at the formerly industrial M2 area as a place to build a community, which must include basic things like medical facilities, fitness, food, retail, restaurants, et cetera. It's time to think about what we want this city to look like for the people who live here, and the people who work here, and the people who would like to play here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shanson. Our next speaker this evening is Pamela Jones.
Good evening, council and staff. And I want to honor you for the courage that you have and the wisdom that you have to even bring this to the forefront. I really thank you, and in fact, I bow to you because I know what that must have took to be sitting here today, listening to this conversation. I gave you an attachment because I wanted you to, to my letter to CNN, I wanted you to visualize what I see and how I feel. So when I, when I was working on this and putting it together, and I looked at what the full build-out would be, and this is just based on information on the city website, it came out to 3.7, excuse me, 7.3-plus million square feet of office space and approximately 40,000 employees. And then the number of, and on the graph, I explain how I came up with that data. I didn't just dream it up, although I dreamed about it. And then when you look at the residential, there's only 4,222 units being proposed. So I'm not sure how that balances, if that's, you know, where we're moving in the, in District One. And I wanted you to note that of the 734 units that have been built, 777 Hamilton, 3639, and 3645 Haven Street, of those 7,000, 734 units, only 37 are deed-restricted affordable, only 37. And then 22 units later came along, and they're subsidized for teachers. So even with the housing that is proposed being built there, it's not something that's going to be affordable to the community. I wanted to give you a piece that will be helpful when you're doing your documentation on the housing displacement. In approximately 2015, the home prices in the Bell Haven neighborhood became comparable to the homes in the Flood Triangle, the ones that are similar-built houses. And that is the first time in the history of Menlo Park. I know, because I have property on both sides. The reality was, until that point, houses in Bell Haven were 50% to 75% of what it would be if you went on the other side of the freeway. So when the research is done, that kind of deep research, you will see it's a significant impact on housing displacement, that alone. The other piece is, and I've said this here to you before, as well to the planning commission, nobody has ever monitored the air quality within the middle of the residential area. Put a monitor up in the Bell Haven school, and you will note what has been happening to us. To use the census tract is an inaccurate way to collect the data. We have to move beyond that. The last thing that I want to say, and all this, this was in my statement, is you've got to look at the 2019 CEQA requirements. That is what we need to be moving off of today, all current projects and future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Our next speaker this evening is Vicky Robledo.
Good evening. I am a member of District One, also known as Bell Haven. I really, a lot of my neighbors have said a lot of what I already want to say, but I'm going to just emphasize it. I strongly support the moratorium for the reasons that many have said. The traffic, number one, is just outrageous, the dangerous cut-throughs. And I remember last year, when the Willows came to one of the council members, and they had 200 people here, because they didn't want the traffic cutting through their neighborhoods. And I think within a day, these massive three-foot signs were up. I've yet to see those, but yet I've seen the accidents happen, and I've seen the dangerous buildup on Willow when the kids are having to cut through the cars as they're trying to get across to the high school, because the cars are rushing to get over through Willow to the west side, or wherever they're going. But the danger that I see, these high schools can't walk in the crosswalk, they're walking in between the cars because everyone's trying to get to that green light. The other issue that I've always been really concerned, is the quality of air, the quality of life in the community. And even though development is inevitable, again, one of the issues I'm most concerned about is how it's distributed. And Bell Haven, as many were saying, it is somewhat of a square, and we see E.P.A.S. Palo Alto as our neighbors. We're congested, we're stuck in one little area. I've sent a photo, well, a little video of an ambulance one day trying to get through, and they were just, they were stuck. They couldn't get anywhere. I mean, I, right now, it takes me, depends on the day, 20 minutes to go one block. And I'm on Madera to get to Newbridge, so it's just Carlton there. And that's because the people that are coming off of Hamilton, I'm going to cut through Carlton, Henderson, Sevilla, all those streets to get to Newbridge, to cut through to get to Willow. So all of this is something that I think, I mean, I know developers, as Cheryl, my neighbor, was saying, the developers have a lot to gain. And I'm so strongly in support of the moratorium, but at the same time, libraries, schools, things that are critical to the neighborhood are not things that I'm seeing are being considered, it's just more the development. There's not going to be jobs, and if there is jobs created by any hotels, where are those, say, the service workers, where are they going to live? Because it's still the blue collar. I work in affordable housing. I work revitalizing communities. And right now, low income is $90,000. That is at latest rate, okay? That is the latest status, $90,000. So I think we constantly have to keep in mind, who's the most impacted by all of this? And it's Bell Haven consistently. So I ask you, please consider the moratorium for the sake of our communities, the entire Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Ross Levy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for taking on this very, very difficult issue that's at a regional, state level and local level. I'm speaking tonight as an architect. I am working on a project in the El Camino Real Special Use District. It's a small mixed-use project, provides four units of housing and two commercial spaces. And I would ask that these sorts of projects might be exempted from this discussion. We're just trying to do small infill housing and play our part in the housing problem writ large. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Paging my council members. Ladies and gentlemen, if we could go ahead and please bring the meeting back to order. Councilmember Carlton, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, great. So we're going to go ahead and bring the ma, the meeting back to order and continue public comment. Our next speaker this evening is Richard Trumpler.
Good evening. Richard Trumpler, I am the Vice President of Development for the Sobrato Organization. Dear honorable council members, the Sobrato Organization has been an active member of the Menlo Park community as both property owner and a philanthropy focused on local giving. We appreciate being included in this important community dialogue around Connect Menlo, and sympathize with the questions that are being asked about growth in Menlo Park and District One in particular. And I was just sharing with another audience member, we actually hope to be part of the solution to some of the problems. Under Connect Menlo, all projects must complete their environmental reviews and come before either city council or planning commission for final approval. We have two projects that would be effective, but to give you a context of time, we think the earliest of our projects would reach an approval milestone would be the end of 2020. And so I think that's important to understand, that maybe a moratorium isn't required because building permits have a long, are a long ways out there, at least for us. And I think that there's time to study these important issues that the community is asking while we're doing our EIR. We appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this community dialogue, and we look forward to continued discussions. We urge and support the city to study the concerns of the community so that they can make, and the city council can make, an make, and the City Council can make, an informed decision when considering projects. But we don't think a moratorium is required to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Larry Dahl. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council. I've never even been to Bellhaven. I live in downtown Menlo Park. I've been there for 47 years. And the surprise I have is that there's been no real growth in the downtown area. I mean, you're sticking everything out in the hinterland, in a way, because it's easy to do. But I think you have to face up to the idea, look at Redwood City, they're building very large high-rises of housing all throughout the city now. Menlo Park needs to start doing the same thing and get rid of the idea that we're just a bedroom community. I live in a very small apartment, probably smaller than most of your bathrooms. And it's okay, I can live with that. And I think there are a lot of people that could live with that. So I think you need to start focusing on building things that people can afford. Now, as for a moratorium, I'd say yes, do it, just because you have to step back from that area of putting all the development there. Just a few months ago, Apple and Google and Facebook, there was an announcement in one of the newspapers that they were going to be adding 40,000 jobs over the next few years with a very small number of housing units. Rather than a moratorium, which I still agree that you should do, you should start thinking about putting limitations. When somebody builds a business that's going to have 100,000 employees, or 50,000 employees, or 20,000 employees, make them build 20,000 homes. You know, that's the only way you're going to solve the problem that we have. Allowing companies like Facebook and these others to just go crazy, building enormous numbers of spaces for employees, just makes it horrible. Even in downtown Menlo Park, rents have gone up drastically because a lot of people from Google, Apple, Facebook are now moving into the area. In some cases, they come around to the housing units and say, "Who owns this? We'd like to buy it," so they can get rid of regular people that live there. This all has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker this evening is Alatunde Saba Mahin.
Good evening, Council and staff. I feel humbled to be here and energized by the conversation, the various perspectives. My name is Alatunde Saba Mahin. I work at Street Code Academy. And while we started with 20 students in E.P.A.S. Palo Alto, we now are based in Menlo Park with over 1,000 students. I care deeply about education. I care deeply about community. And what I see here is that, I hear, I see a rich conversation of various voices that represent different perspectives, different people, different races, backgrounds, and that kind of opportunity is why I support the moratorium. I think taking a step back, as many people have said, gives us a chance to look at, how do we get more voices in the room? How do we increase everyone's knowledge of this conversation and have a more comprehensive look at what the impacts are going to be? How to develop a better community benefit plan? How to create an equitable solution, given the emerging tech industry? This is why I support the moratorium, and thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this conversation.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Karen Grove.
Hi. I'm going to be brief and say that Menlo Together is a group of residents from throughout the city who care about sustainable housing and transportation equity solutions. And I support the letter that was submitted by that organization. And I wanted to add, on a personal note, I'm a member of the Housing Commission, but I am speaking for myself, that I strongly oppose stopping, delaying, or reducing the scope or number of affordable housing units in the pipeline anywhere in the city. And the reason for that is that the regional housing needs assessments from Menlo Park are a very low bar for what the region actually needs. And of those requirements, at the market rate, we have built or permitted 775 of the 150 required, very low bar. Four of 143 required at moderate income, that's your teachers. And at low income, only 37 of 129 required. And at very low income, only 103 of 233 required. So it's really important that we keep building the affordable housing, and I don't think we can afford to stop it because of where it is. I also very, very much support more development downtown near transit, sustainable, it's good for people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Patty Fry.
Good evening.
Good evening, Patty Fry, former Planning Commissioner. I'm going to speak a little bit from that perspective. There is a housing shortage, and I think there are some real reasons for us to take a pause right now. Yes, there were two major expensive planning documents that are only a few years old, but they're nearing their non-residential caps already, and they were supposed to last us 25 to 30 years. So why is that? I think that they didn't, I think, I know, because I'm kind of a wonk, they didn't reflect modern business practices in terms of worker density. And I think it's time for us to step back and take a look at that. Further, there've been reviews of both the specific plan and the Connect Menlo plan, but not much has happened from those reviews. The 2016 review of the specific plan had action items that still haven't been completed. And I don't want to blame anybody, I just think it's the weight of all the activity that's making it difficult for staff and decision-makers to process all of that. So I think it's time to just take a pause, to really look at what changes are going to be required. These caps are being approached quickly, and I think we're going to have changes anyway to these plans. So why don't we step back and make sure that the changes are the ones we need to make? I will point out, for those who don't live on the other part of Menlo Park, we often have gridlock on El Camino, and it affects all of us. We have two major projects on El Camino that are being built right now, and they will have a major impact on this part of town, too. So I don't think any of us are spared, but I do think a lot more has happened on the eastern side. And with the development well over 90%, 95% against these plans, we still don't have infrastructure plans in place. We still don't have a transportation master plan in place. There are a lot of things we don't have in place that would really help us address all of these. And so I think, again, this pause will help us address those things. And I would suggest that this be, during this pause, there be a very practical approach, looking first at short-term changes that can be made within the caps, because those won't need environmental review, or, you know, a long environmental review. And then look at the longer-term ones that may change density, height, and so on, that may require more extensive. But I think there are some changes that can be made to help ease the jobs-housing imbalance within the caps. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Elias Blawi.
Elias Blawi, longtime Menlo Park resident. Good evening. My comments focus on the commercial moratorium, though spill over inevitably to the obvious gross, commercial, and housing imbalance. I strongly support the proposed moratoriums and the stated rationales. We need a reset and time to review, reflect, and replan. Our general plan has two important words I always remember and point out to council from time to time, "quality of life." Not only do we hardly pay lip service to those words in recent years, candidly, we sold it. We shouldn't have sold it, we did. We sold it for some budget dollars, some prior politics, and various priorities, a mistake. Time to reset. As a resident, I hear some renewed, fresh air again tonight in that direction. I think the rapid exhaustion of available permitted development that Ms. Frye just spoke to, in just a few years, and not the planned, literally decades, tells us clearly, the long-term plan was itself not that at all, but really a development in land speculation of opening of a floodgate. That floodgate sprung open, and more to come if we don't reset. I remember the slogan, "Grow our way out." A fallacious argument, "Look what grew, look at what we got and what we did not. Stop, listen, look, reflect." Importantly, traffic has not been addressed. It's painfully clear and downright dangerous now. Connect Menlo was frankly a slogan. What we got was not Connect Menlo, but rather congest Menlo. Now we need to correct Menlo. We got little or nothing for drastically escalated commercial development. It is not a panacea for local jobs or supporting local commerce. Importantly, it is completely out of whack with corresponding housing. The ratio imbalances are laughable. Traffic, tragic, but, you know, more of the same. We don't even satisfy the projected housing driven by the job growth from the commercial development, let alone chip away at the bigger chronic issues. Fundamentally, we need to find a rebalance and equity in housing and commercial, simple as that. We don't have the right equilibrium. That needs to change, including with tools you are debating this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blawi. Our next speaker this evening is Aaron Barron.
Short walk. Good morning, and good evening. Yeah, good evening. I've had the pleasure of being an engineering student at Stanford for the past four years, and now working at Street Code. And I've admired the strong, authentic community here in the peninsula, right? I'm well aware of the promises said to this community about the innovations of these developments. It's literally the reason I came all the way out here from Georgia. Students who work right next to me come here from all over the world, hoping to get just a spot at one of these places, right? But before I was a student, you know, before I was a future engineer, I was a son, and I had the opportunity to be a brother. And behind me, I see sons, and brothers, and daughters, fathers, and mothers, uncles, cousins, and they're all saying the same thing, and it's that there are essential services due to them that the council has part of its agreement to its constituents, right? These proposed projects have enormous impacts on our health. Just today, there was unhealthy air quality provided by the weather app in Menlo Park, the safety, traffic, and the quality of life, and just the wellness of the citizens here. And I just hope that we can make the necessary decisions on behalf of all the citizens here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Daniel Ramos.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. I appreciate you taking the time to hear the voice of the people here, and I hope you're giving equitable weight to the voices you've heard and how they'll be affected by this development project. I stand here to support the moratorium, to ensure that the community has time and access to increase their knowledge on the long-term impact on the future growth of tech in our community, and because I want to take into account the needs of the community, and I want to ensure that all of us are doing this work together. As other folks have said, who's been involved? Who's been informed? Who is the public? My name is Daniel Ramos, and I'm a teacher at Street Code Academy and manager of our Tech for Community programs. And right now, I don't know how this will impact my students in the long term. I don't know how this will affect the surrounding community in the long term. I haven't seen enough in the process to tell me those impacts have been given enough careful consideration. What I do know is that I want those affected involved in the process. I want the community to be informed. So I'm in favor of this moratorium to take a moment, as others have said, to pause and to reflect. As manager for the Street Code, our Tech for Community programs, we have eight programs focused on learning about tech and getting students excited about building tech tools. So I'm by no means against the tech industry, and in fact, I'm for it. I mean, that's why I'm an educator. I see tech as a powerful opportunity for change and growth of communities and a real problem-solving machine. I also see tech as being guilty of embodying the culture of moving fast and breaking things. But there are real lives and other issues at stake that cannot be handled with the same thought and attitude of moving fast and then seeing what breaks. I hope that the City Council doesn't catch that toxic bug. I care about education, equity, and I care about this issue so much that I see this as a learning opportunity for all of us. I see this as an opportunity to inform the public about this process and learn how to do this right in an equitable way. And as an educator, I know that some things take time to figure out. So let's take some time to figure this out equitably. I understand that there are needs to be addressed, such as housing and employment, and I hope that everyone here, too, also understands that impacts on housing and employment will last far longer by any order of magnitude than the length of any moratorium. With that in mind, what's the rush? Let's take some time to pause.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Our next speaker this evening is Vasili Oros.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Vasili Oros, and I am a small business owner in downtown Menlo Park. Most of us agreed that we need to have a more vibrant downtown, and that's why in 2012, the El Camino Real Downtown specific plan was approved. And we spent four years working on a development project in downtown. We followed all the rules, regulations, and when we got in front of the Planning Commission, the development was found too cold and too not right fit for downtown Menlo Park. I agreed with that and understand the importance of keeping downtown look warm and special because it's the best town I ever know. We start all over again, spend almost two more years. Finally, we got a study session, and the project was received well. Finally, after enormous financial expenditure, losing strategic tenants, a sweeping memorandum all over the town will have severe impacts on some small business persons which are trying to improve the... If you look at our project, we didn't cut any corners. We really made it to be proud of the building, and that's why we're almost six years in the project. Now, I hear the lot of commitments, a lot of issues and impacts, most of them coming from District One, where it's a very large development, and I understand. But we cannot have a broad sweep all over other parts of town because if we listen careful, residents living in District One, what they would like, they would like to see more density in downtown area in El Camino. If we listen to the residents living in downtown and El Camino area, they will like less development and less traffic. Then a moratorium just going all over, sweeping and stopping in the tracks, all the projects, I don't think we'll have a, because they're opposite, residents from District One has opposite interests from residents from downtown El Camino. And for a small business person, this can have drastic financial impacts, and I think we should consider all parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oros. Our next speaker this evening is Frandine.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Frandine, Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to talk about one of the bullets on the Assistant City Attorney's presentation, and that is alternatives. I believe that a move toward the citywide moratorium is premature. The moratorium does not The moratorium does not solve the jobs, housing imbalance. It does not change housing affordability. It does not solve traffic issues, which in many cases are regional in nature. It does not create access to services, education, or public transit. However, a moratorium could compromise relationships, public trust, revenue. There are choices and options to address the elements suggested in the request for moratorium while providing continuity, revenue, and regional partnerships. Yes, you can continue with your 2019 adopted principles, priorities, excuse me, priorities, or you could turn to a moratorium, but more importantly, you could redirect your 2019 focus as a council to address the issues outlined. Council priorities can be changed. You have the ability to do this. A moratorium is not going to solve the problem. Instead, it could create a new set, put us farther behind, and may result in unintended consequences. Reasons outlined for a suggested moratorium can be handled through staff direction, independent consultant analysis, and community engagement. And let's remember, one of those slides, community engagement will lessen on a moratorium. The moratorium is not needed to perform analysis of impacts to reconsider zoning or, excuse me, rezoning or upzoning. Look at your goals. We've already identified transportation master plan, market affordable housing preservation, El Camino Real Downtown specific plan update, Connect Menlo. All have been identified. Those are the elements you have to deal with. Where you may have transferred project elements into a CIP, pull them back under a unique project umbrella where you set milestones. Clearly identify the issues. Acknowledge everyone's interest. Select a set of solution that creates balance. Without that, no remedy will ever be achieved, even through a moratorium. Menlo Park can meet the challenge if clearly defined and prioritized. Proclude a signal to other legislative bodies that we are unable to work effectively to develop solutions that identify, rectify, or preserve our local values. We do not need the state telling us what to do. We have not failed. However, a defined mid-course correction through prioritization is a wiser choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Akela Francis. Akela, is that Akela?
Akela has an imaginary Y. Good evening, council. My name is Akela Francis, and I was born and raised in East Palo Alto and practically grew up in Menlo Park. I support the moratorium because the question really with the development that is happening is who benefits? So I live, I work at Street Code Academy as well, and I'm the Director of Operations. And like I said, I grew up in this area. What I see is families that come through our program who are excited about technology, excited about the potential for their future, still struggling. We talk about job creation, but the people who, you know, get these jobs are working in the kitchens, they're administrative assistants, so they're really not really advancing their future in a way that's going to be meaningful for them. And most of the time, particularly in East Palo Alto, I'm not sure of how it looks in Menlo Park, that people are really living on top of each other. So often through the schools, through our program, you see students who are in a house where there's five or six families in one household. So we talk about this idea of housing creation. People still can't afford the houses. So what is the real benefit for our community? And the way I see it is if you think about it as a cookie, we get the crumbs of the cookie. And the people who are making the cookie or baking the cookie are the people who really can't afford to live here anymore. And to hear about the unfairness between Bell Haven versus the West Side of Menlo Park is tragic for me. It's tragic that we don't, that particular area, it doesn't have a voice at the table. They don't get a chance to say no in the way that the West Side has been able to say no and not get development in their cities. So to me, it's really tragic and it's challenging, and I pose a challenge for you guys to actually, you know, implement the moratorium and really sit back and make some key decisions and understand the impact, the impact for all of the people involved, particularly Bell Haven, and even I see it really, East Palo Alto and Bell Haven are neighbors, and a lot of the families live across the neighborhoods. It's tragic, and it's really important that we take a step back and say, ask who benefits. Because from my perspective, the people who benefit are the developers, the property managers, the property owners, and less of the community people, and that is tragic. So let's take a step back to reflect and think about this because it's going to impact our future long-term. To, I think, believe Daniel's point, that 45 days will be nothing compared to the years of impact that it may have on our families who no longer will be here if we continue to allow developers to come in and say, "We're going to give you a little sprinkle of crumbs," and for us to be okay with it. It's not okay, and we need to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Our next speaker this evening is Diane Bailey.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and council members. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm Director of Menlo Spark. We're a local community environmental group working towards a zero-carbon and climate-safe future for Menlo Park and the region. Menlo Spark is also a member of Menlo Together, and we support the comments sent earlier today, mentioned also by Karen Grove earlier. We don't have a position on the moratorium, but we really appreciate the discussion that's happening here today as a result of the proposed moratorium. The discussion really allows us to focus in on finding good sites for housing and especially affordable housing downtown, and that there are many environmental benefits to affordable housing near transit and services, cutting down traffic and the associated pollution and carbon as well. The moratorium discussion also allows us to look at more mobility options throughout the city, but especially in District One that's so heavily impacted. And finally, it allows us to talk about how to address the disproportionate impacts in District One, quality of life, air quality, and safety issues as well. And to that end, Menlo Spark would be really interested in helping the city do some air quality monitoring, if that was an interest, working with residents and community groups to make sure that the air monitoring is done right and we really get a handle on what pollution levels people are exposed to. I wanted to comment with respect to the staff report, question number five. If the moratorium does go forward, I really do hope that we can consider moving some of the affordable housing projects that are in the pipeline now forward. A lot of work has been put into these projects, in particular, the Mid Penn project on Willow, and there is a critical need for housing, as so many have commented, and so I hope that can continue to move. And I really look forward to a robust discussion on how to increase housing downtown next week as we begin to talk about an update for the downtown specific plan. I hope that the city can take a proactive stance, really identifying sites that are suitable for affordable housing in particular. There would be so many benefits to the community to locate more affordable housing downtown. And finally, thank you so much for taking on these challenging issues. It's long overdue. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Lynn Bramlett. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, council members. I believe a moratorium is needed, at least in District One, to give time to audit and evaluate the impact of the Connect Menlo zoning changes. As a recap, the Connect Menlo exercise focused on the M2 area of Menlo Park. The main goal of Connect Menlo was to maximize development in a small area of town roughly 5% of Menlo Park's overall size. The goal was increased revenue to the city's coffers. Residents living outside of the area were told that the Connect Menlo zoning changes would not apply to other parts, in other parts of Menlo Park. The initiating details are given in the August 27, 2013 staff report. I have recently, by the way, gone through the Connect Menlo documents. I'd like to just read from this. Under the heading, "Why Does the General Plan Need to Be Updated?", here is the statement. "The council has identified the need for the city to focus on the M2 zoning district to explore opportunities to streamline processes and increase revenue potential. The M2 area has historically been a strong source of revenue for the city and provides an opportunity for continued revenue if planned for appropriately. To simplify the discussion's central issues, I will call Connect Menlo a giant development project. Projects are considered successful when they meet two conditions. The first condition is that the project delivers value to all parties in the project. The main parties in the Connect Menlo development project are developers, the city's revenue stream, and residents. And while two out of three parties are presumably satisfied, Connect Menlo is not delivering value to District One residents. The second condition to consider a project successful is that the project maintains the original scope, schedule, and agreed-to parameters. One of them was that Connect Menlo was a legal update to the city of Menlo Park's general plan. I've gone through the California general plan guidelines with the focus on Chapter Two. I can't see how it can be considered a legal update, and I think we need an objective outside opinion on it. The other is that guiding principles were supposed to guide all this. These lack, these never had metrics, and they've never been measured. And just reading the first one on citywide equity and what it says, I think we'd all agree, you know, we haven't been following this, so we need to pause to evaluate things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. Our next speaker, excuse me, our next speaker this evening is Tiffany Finley Souza. Okay. Ms. Finley Souza? It's great. I love the sound of it.
Hi. I think it is wise to include Palo Alto and East Palo Alto, city councils also to do the moratorium for the time being. When a major development project occurs in one city, the surrounding cities become affected as well. Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, and Palo Alto does not have any more land to build on, and we certainly can't afford to spend more money for new housing at the moment. New housing means not just more traffic everywhere, but means may need to build more lights, more parking lots, more stop signs, maybe more grocery stores, maybe more trains every 30 minutes because they are overpopulated. All I'm saying is that we, the Peninsula, and maybe the whole Bay Area, needs to fix the cities and our people living in those cities before we allow any more traffic slash commuters to come in. We have enough problems on our hands with traffic and not enough affordable housing. This moratorium may be temporary, but it will help the city and/or cities to fix the issues before we add more issues. Do we have a job that density problem, a traffic problem, student slash teacher ratio problem, dangerous streets in communities, transportation that involves people, problem, et cetera? Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I want to comment, your daughter is incredibly well-behaved. It's incredibly impressive. Very impressive. All right. Our next speaker this evening is Jackie Sebrian.
Good evening, council members and mayor. That's a really hard act to follow. So thank you so much for taking the issue up. I want to weigh in quickly on the side of the moratorium. As a resident at Bell Haven for 15 years, I have to say, it is a little bit crazy over there. So a couple of things to keep in mind. Those developments and promises that we've heard about and we talked about, the public process that went through, I would like to point out that Bell Haven has representation on the council for the first time in 40 years. So I think, I don't know where Bell Haven's vote was on that lower-density downtown, but I know it wasn't here. So I think that's worth considering. The Facebook traffic is well over its traffic caps regularly, so those promises that developers are making to us, they're not living through with it. If they can't keep their traffic under control under the agreement we had, I don't see why we should allow more. I think the, I echo all the comments that my neighbors have said about the impact of quality of life. If there is not currently a baseline air quality index, it's a little bit shameful. We're surrounded by six lanes of traffic in our tiny little triangle. I don't see how that air is not a problem for more people. So I salute your bravery in bringing this up. I encourage us to think thoughtfully about how we can make the community a livable, workable play space for everyone and breathable. And then the last thing I would add, because I talked really fast, is that I would hope that the library is somehow allowed to be included. I would hate to see the library lose its momentum for this, but somehow, public buildings seem like they shouldn't be caught up in all the rest of it. So the public benefits that we're supposed to accrue should start accruing. I'm sure that a grocery store could be built before any of the rest of it, and there's enough people there already to use it. So thank you for your work, and yeah, thanks for taking this on.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Gabriel Toretti. Thank you. Our next speaker is Yamaros Sissoneros.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Yamaros Sissoneros. I'm with the Bay Area Council, a public policy advocacy organization for the nine-county Bay Area. We proactively advocate for a strong economy, a vital business environment, and a better quality of life for everyone who lives here. And speaking of quality of life, I know that's exactly the reason why we're having this discussion this evening, and I do appreciate the very valid concerns that were discussed tonight, such as the traffic and concerns of displacement. However, I just did want to echo some of the points made in our letter, as well as the points made this evening, that there are better tools out there besides a blanket ban on development. Because a moratorium could actually have adverse unintended consequences when you have such little existing stock of housing, and you have workers that have the means to compete for that housing, that will push out the people and displace the people into different areas. And then you have low-income workers who can't afford to live here, and then they're forced to live in cheaper, more affordable housing outwards, and then that just adds to the congestion of the regional traffic. And when we're 30 years behind in a housing crisis, 30 years behind in housing production, the last thing we should do is halt housing. I know that the problem is so big, it just seems easy to give into fatalism, but we should buckle down and be that much more stronger for our community and for our region. I agree, and some of the comments made, that there are opportunities to identify solution and to collaborate. For example, I heard that there's an opportunity to distribute the housing in a more equitable way, have housing in downtown. And I believe in response to the APR, the annual progress report, the Housing Commission made some recommendations such as identifying sites for affordable housing. So this could be an opportunity. We're at a point where we could pivot and stop and pause, or we could leverage the community benefits opportunities, look at a TDM, traffic demand management system, provide those solutions, and have a community for Menlo Park where we could all live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Pearlany.
Hi, good evening. I want to see so many wonderful, familiar faces of Menlo Park, good residents from Menlo Park here. It's really nice. I just want to tell a story, and I think some of you guys have heard of this. So when I was pregnant with my first son, who's now 14 and about to go to MA, we were living in San Francisco, and we said, you know what? We don't want to be in the city anymore. We want to live in a place where our children can grow and play and make friends, and we would have that kind of family life that we enjoyed. We looked all over the Peninsula. We looked in Belmont. We looked in Hillsborough. We went, we lived in Palo Alto and rented. And it was only till we found Menlo Park, and we said, "This is a gem of a community. This is a place where not only will our children grow up, but our grandchildren will grow up and so forth. We really want to have roots in this community." My husband, as many of you guys know, is a play activist, and he wrote a book called Playberhood, Creating Neighborhoods Where Children Can Play. And we've been so privileged in having such a great community of kids who ride their bikes over to our house after school and play in our front yard, play in our backyard. The New York Times even wrote an article about this, saying, "What an incredible, rare thing to happen in today's age that kids actually can have a free place where they can feel safe and comfortable in playing." So it is with such great sadness that, you know, in the past three years even, we've such, seen such an increase in traffic... seen such an increase in traffic in El Camino, on University Drive, on Middle. These are streets where my kids bike every day to come home from school. These are streets where their friends bike from after school to come to our house to play. And now, there are cars all over the place. And just to think that we're thinking about even adding more buildings and more traffic. When one of these kids, my kids or their friends, get hit by a car, what will we be thinking? We will be looking back at the decision that we're going to make today. That's my story. My second point is, as you guys may have seen, we've had a tremendous outpouring of interest in what's happening today. Not only did you guys all show up with very little notice, but your email logs from Menlo Park City Council, last time I counted, there were 70 emails, 95% of the people, all in support of a moratorium. This is the good people of Menlo Park speaking up and telling you what they want. We really ask city council to do their job and vote for what the people want. Last point. I would like to request that city councilperson Catherine Carlton be recused from this vote because of her role as Vice President of Business Development for a Land Development Corporation. According to PR Newswire, she's the Vice President of Business Development for the China Fortune Land Company, one of the largest real estate development companies in the world, and she heads up the North American subsidiary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ne. And Councilmember Carlton, we can go ahead and just, if you want me just to hold, go ahead and hold on that issue?
I can say, I stopped working for that company more than six months ago, and I was never heading up the company. So I don't know where she's getting that information, but it's not correct. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Our next speaker this evening is Skip Hilton.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Thanks for hearing comments on this important topic. My name is Skip Hilton. I'm a resident of Menlo Park for 26 years and a homeowner for 22 in District Two. I actually, I guess I'll just say it, I like to speak against the moratorium, because I think that, not that I don't think there are problems that need to be solved, but I think the moratorium is a very blunt instrument. And it will have, as many speakers have said before, unintended consequences. When you pull the cord, I mean, these development projects, whether they're, you know, whatever they're going to bring to the city, good or bad, they have a long gestation period. They have financing, they have decision-making that has to go between them. And when you start, when you pull the cord and stop everything, you shut down that entire process, the line is stopped. You can't just flip the switch and start off where you left off. It doesn't work that way. Not only that, but we will also be sending a message that this is not a place that can, their commitments can be honored. So we've approved projects, there are projects in pipeline, there are housing projects in pipeline, there are also commercial projects in pipeline. There's investment, and there's businesses, and there's people behind those projects that are counting on the commitment of the Planning Commission and the city council to honor their commitments. And if a moratorium can wipe all that away, and it will basically create a situation where people won't want to come and do any more development. And we have to remember, too, the city council doesn't have money to do this development. You know, the people that want this don't have the money to do the development. It has to come from some source. If we want to build the things that we want, if we want to solve the problems of traffic, if we want to solve the problems of housing, vibrancy, community, it has to come through that process. And if we shut that process down, then we might not be able to get that process going for some time. I think an alternative to the moratorium would be to look at the downtown-specific plan, to look at the general plan, both of which had years and years and years of input from the community. These are things that we've decided that we want. If we want to make changes to the downtown plan or the general plan, we can make those changes. We can continue housing, if that's a priority, or if we've met the cap. If, in fact, you do decide that a moratorium should be proposed, I would say, number one, I would exempt pipeline projects for the reasons I stated. I would also say, number two, that you've heard a lot from District One, there are disproportionate impacts. And maybe it should be focused on District One, a moratorium on something there, although I don't agree with it in general. And the last thing I would say is, please, 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 don't decide that we just need to do more studies, or more consultants, or more time. There are better ways to solve this. A moratorium is kind of a white flag. It's kind of like giving up and saying, we're out of control of the development in our community. I think you guys have the ability to control the development of the community and to direct it in the way you want. Go Warriors.
Go Warriors. We can all agree on that. Our next speaker, before I announce that, if there's anyone who wanted to fill out a comment card and speak this evening who hasn't done so yet, suggest you do so. We're down to our last three speakers. Our next speaker this evening is Rachel Horst.
Good evening, council members. I would also like to say that I was, I also signed on to the letter from Menlo Together, and so that pretty accurately represents my views on this topic, but I also wanted to share my comments with you personally tonight. I look at this as an opportunity to reflect, first and foremost. And the thing is, we have the same opportunity with Connect Menlo, we have the same opportunity with the downtown-specific plan, but the fact that these two conversations are happening separately is, to me, exactly the problem. So I want to thank the council members for sparking this conversation, first of all. And I've noticed that we have so many people here tonight from downtown saying, come on, you know, this is ridiculous, we need denser housing here because we need housing now in general, and we have the transit, and we have the proximity and the walkability. And, you know, I'm one of those people, right? And then you also have people coming from Bellhaven, coming from District One, saying, stop, you know, we have a huge company here, who knows how many tens of thousands of employees, horrible traffic, not much to show for all this development, we need to take a step back. And so with those two conversations going on, to me, it becomes a little bit obvious that there is a solution here. The issues of downtown and the issues of District One, you know, they're inextricable, and we need to be talking about not just the moratorium, but redistribution, redistribution of housing, redistribution of change. You know, we need to put housing where housing is supposed to go. Do I personally feel that a moratorium is the way to go? At this point, no. I'm concerned about that, because I don't want to let us off the hook. You know, we're behind, as Ms. Grove has said, on an affordable housing unit, and, you know, I don't view this as the way to get there. But again, I'm very thankful for what the council members have brought forward. I'm thankful for the individuals who have come and given their feedback, who have come and given their feedback tonight. I understand this evening, you're not making a yes or no decision. So I implore you to just think about what you can do now, as the gentleman before me said, with the projects that you have in the pipeline all over town. You know, the city does have tools, it doesn't just have land use authority, it has, you know, negotiating power, it reviews these projects. I mean, we're talking about development agreements. So things can be done there, and they still can be done, and that's the positive side of this. So I just urge you to prioritize mitigating the many impacts that we've heard about tonight, and take action on these projects that are under your review to the extent that you can, and, you know, what is in front of you right now, today, because I think we haven't seen enough action there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horst. Our next speaker this evening is Ron Kriedemeyer.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Ron Kriedemeyer. I'm the chief operating officer for Tarleton Properties. Unfortunately, John could not make it tonight. He is actively riding his bicycle across America to support Stanford Cancer. So he is busy. Tarleton Properties has been a member of the Menlo Park community for over 30 years. We worked hard, long and thoughtfully in our part to carve out a piece of the old M2 district to create a Life Science District in that neighborhood. That district does allow for, the redistricting does allow for expansion of the Life Science use in that district. It also limits the use in that district to Life Science. Life Science, as you likely know, is a much less dense use by a third to a fourth of office uses. Forty to 50% of our buildings are laboratories that are utilized by the same people that use the office space. So the use is much less intense. We understand the community's desire to see the benefits that were outlined in Connect Menlo come to fruition, and we stand by our commitment to provide those benefits. You know, we, the LS District was created two years ago. We have had zero projects. We have two in the pipeline now. It's our intent to continue to do our work thoughtfully and in a considerate way over an extended period of time as we do expand the Life Science District. That said, we do have investors, and those investors are not going to like hearing about a moratorium. The public benefits that come out of the Life Science District are going to be tied to the projects that occur in that district. And so, to that end, you know, we're concerned that the extreme measure of a moratorium may spook our investors, dissuade them from investing, and it's not a break-tapping process for them. It's an extended period of reviews, and they have their own internal committees and different things. So we're really concerned that it's not a break-tap, it's simply a stop. And the important work that our tenants are doing in our district, everything from biopharmaceuticals to heart stents that are in the market, to cancer diagnostics, to ag-bio products that actually have received green tech awards, we'd like to see all that continue. We look forward to our partnership with the city, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Adina Levin.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Adina Levin. I am a Menlo Park resident. I live near downtown. I would like to put my support to the ideas that were in the letter from Menlo Together, and talk about several different items that have been brought up today. And firstly, I'd like to thank Menlo Park City Council for the lovely air conditioning, which is helping while it cools down where I live, so hopefully, it'll be a little bit cooler when I get there. So I want to echo something that a number of different members of the public have said in terms of the balance of development. As someone who lives downtown, I agree with several other of the people who live near downtown who would like to see more housing downtown, more affordable housing downtown, and agree with the comments that having almost all of the housing in the city concentrated in the area near Bellhaven is not right and not fair. And having, you know, reconsidering and bringing more housing downtown is something that I would support as a resident, and certainly wouldn't support slowing that down. I would support speeding up figuring out how to do that better. Another aspect in terms of a slowdown that I feel significantly less comfortable with is any slowdown of affordable housing. We have a tremendous affordable housing crisis and a jobs-housing imbalance, and slowing down adding affordable housing will certainly cause a burden for low-income people in our area. And even slowing down market rate housing that is near job, housing near jobs and services, just putting a random apartment building in a random place will put a burden in the community, but to the extent that we are adding housing near jobs and services, even when it's market rate, it can serve as basically a yuppie sponge. So if someone is a high-paid person who works at, you know, one of the high-tech businesses in Tarleton or at Facebook, they have a choice of where to live. And if they don't have a nice new place to live, they will go to an existing place, and they will displace existing residents. And so my concern is that slowing down on housing will accelerate displacement. I don't know if you will have enough votes to have a moratorium, but I really urge you to accelerate in dealing with the issues in terms of having more development, especially housing downtown. I would have less concern in pausing in commercial, because we have gotten so far ahead in terms of jobs, ahead of housing. We have 10,000 to 15,000 more jobs and less than 1,000 more housing units. That's something I would like to stop and consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levin. Our next speaker this evening is Amy Robe.
Good evening. Hi. Good evening. Thanks. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the air conditioning. My name is Amy Robe, and I would like to say that I am against the moratorium, because I would actually like to have no building, at least in the Bellhaven neighborhood, District One. That's where I've been a resident of for the last seven years. I am a Bay Area native. I have seen so much change in the Bay Area, and definitely right here in my own neighborhood. My boys are five and eight, and I would love to raise them here. But at the rate that we're going at right now, our quality of life is so weak. I had to choose to be a homeschool parent because our school district is so bad, and it actually has become bankrupt. So now, it's been a blessing, and in that way, but I know a lot of other people just don't, are not that, you know, they don't have that ability. People are bringing up how this may affect our relationship with builders and, you know, all the financiers. Honestly, I don't care. Because that, to me, if Menlo Park stands up for their residents and for the small businesses here, they would be able to show and prove to these financiers and builders that this matters more than that money, that the residents, the people, matter more. And that's where I really, I feel really strongly about, is that we need to make a stand for our people, for the quality of life, for the air that we're breathing, the, you know, traffic flow. All of those things matter so much more than building more things in District One, in my own neighborhood. We're not building any more land. There's no more land to build upon. We're just, you know, finding like little nooks and crannies. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robe. I'm going to be, so after this next speaker, I'm closing time to turn in public comment cards. So if you, last call for public comment cards. Our next speaker is Jen Wallison.
Good evening, council, and thank you for thoughtfully listening to everyone's comments. I'm Jen Wallison, and I'm also part of Menlo Together and support the letter that was sent in this afternoon. My understanding is that tonight, you're just deciding whether a moratorium ordinance should be drafted, not actually voting on the moratorium. And if that's the case, I do think it's worthwhile to consider, to give yourselves some more time, because I know this has all come about very quickly. So I wanted to thank you for that consideration. I also stumbled upon a really interesting set of ideals from the Strong Towns blog. I don't know if any of you subscribe to it. And it just had two points that I think are very relevant for this discussion. Point one was that no neighborhood should experience radical change. And point two was that no neighborhood should be exempt from change. And I thought those words were really powerful, and I hope as you continue considering these issues, you'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Our next speaker this evening is Nevada Merriman.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Nevada Merriman. I am on the Housing Commission and live in Menlo Park. However, today, I'm speaking in the capacity as Director of Development for Mid Penn Housing. I wanted to, first off, state that in this capacity, as a, as a, working for a developer, I am the identified person who is part of the stakeholder on the 21 Elements website. And so I have been a part of that process in pretty much every community in San Mateo and Santa Clara County. And I don't need to restate what Karen Grove went through in detail, but we are, of course, in a deep hole when it comes to the production of affordable housing units. I also just wanted to bring up that the Gateway Project that was recently approved on the 1300 block of Menlo Park, the staff report does make some mention as to whether or not this would impact it, but it is a little bit unclear. And so... And so, there's certainly uncertainty from a business perspective there. And lastly, I think it would be very disappointing for the 82 homes, the people that live in the 82 existing units, if their unit was not able to be part of the new development as they, for a long time, have expressed that they feel their housing is functionally obsolete as it was built in the 1960s. Thanks very much for allowing me the time to express these points.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Juan Barboa, Barborah, excuse me. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Juan Barbosa, and I'm a carpenter, carpenters' union. And I just want to say that I don't support the moratorium because, you know, we need to keep building. We need more housing for people. We need, and we need opportunities for young people. I went through the apprenticeship program, and that has, you know, that offered me the opportunity to become a journeyman and make a good living with good wages and benefits, you know, a pension in the future. So, you know, that's, you know, that, again, just, you know, I don't support the moratorium. That's my opinion, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our last speaker of the evening, is Mr. Ian Streets.
How you guys doing tonight? My name is Ian Streets. I'm a carpenter, local 217. I'm also opposed to the moratorium. This is a great chance to put apprentices to work and let people build a career in the city they live in and have chances to work and actually afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to go ahead and close public comment, and we're going to take There you are. Okay, we're going to go ahead and bring the meeting back to order. We've closed public comment, and now we're going to go ahead and take questions from council members. So, anybody want to go ahead and start off with any questions? Councilmember McCarleton, do you have any questions?
Not at the.
Okay, no questions. So, we'll go ahead and move on to, oh, Councilmember Nash.
I have a question. What are alternatives to a moratorium? There were several people who discussed not wanting a moratorium, that there's other Any thoughts?
So, again, with or without a moratorium, the council is going to have to provide direction as to, you know, what's the threat, what's the threat to public safety, public health, general welfare, forgetting housing for a minute? For a commercial or a non-residential moratorium, what's the threat? What are we attempting to then study or accomplish? What's the end result we want to get to at the end of a moratorium? And you can get to the end result with or without a moratorium. So, whether it's the general plan, whether it's a specific plan, whether it's opening up the housing element and looking at housing policies and identifying housing sites, I mean, there are multiple different ways of getting at some of the issues that you raised in your letter requesting a moratorium. And those can, some of those things can be done, or virtually all of those things can be done with or without a moratorium. I think the other piece is that some people were saying that you can address some of the problems and solutions to problems through development applications. So, an example is the, and again, this is not saying that you should do this, but the Willow Village project has to have a development agreement. And so, a development agreement is a way to contractually obligate the developer to give you things that you want, that you may or may not otherwise be able to get through any other type of process. And so, and you can, you know, in a development agreement, you can contractually obligate the property owner to deliver them when you want, in the order that you want them, et cetera. And so, you may be able to get either money or assistance, or actually construction of improvements or infrastructure, or whatever it is that the council and the community want through development applications. The same thing can be true for other projects if they are at the, you know, community amenity level. You know, there has been some discussion about reexamining the community amenities, and what do you want in community amenities? What are the priority of the community amenities so that if there are any projects, you get the amenities that you want, as opposed to community amenities that an applicant may propose? So, I think there's, through the development process, through, you know, giving direction to reexamine the general plan, et cetera. But again, those can be done with or without a moratorium in either scenario. It's a matter of establishing the priority and the funding and the direction to say, okay, we want you to drop other things. City manager, city attorney, staff, figure out how can we make this the highest priority? How can we devote the resources? And you're going to have to have that discussion, again, with or without a moratorium, if that's the direction you want to go.
The idea of being able to look at zoning across the city, at a concern about the jobs-housing imbalance, how would they be handled with a moratorium?
So, again, with a moratorium, you still have to.
I'm sorry, without a moratorium.
Yeah. So, again, it would be, could be through a general plan process, it could be through a specific plan, it could be taking both of those together and saying, we want to open up this examination, this specific topic, looking at both of those instruments, and looking at, you know, how do we balance that? How do we build this in? I mean, part of this is, I'm speaking off the cuff, and this is going to take sitting down with a community development and the city manager and kind of thinking through, what are the kind of tools and options? What is the timing to do these things? What's going to be the budget to do that, et cetera? But it.
I'm just wondering, I guess what I'm really wondering is, what does one get with a moratorium versus not with a moratorium?
So, what you get with a moratorium is that whatever is covered by the moratorium, whatever's restricted or temporarily not permitted or allowed, can't be approved during the moratorium. So, we are legally obligated to continue to accept applications. We are legally obligated to continue to process applications, you know, et cetera. And so, we cannot, we cannot not accept applications or accept, or process them. So, those things are going to happen, but you can't approve projects. So, it can't go to final approval. They can't actually pull their entitlements, whether it's a use permit at DA, or whatever it is. That final approval can't be approved during the moratorium.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, so, a couple of questions initially, and they're sort of related, and this is for either the city attorneys or staff. Do you know of any examples of moratoriums that fit what is being proposed here, which is essentially citywide moratoriums? And let's just deal with the non-residential, because that's a little bit cleaner. A citywide, essentially prohibition on development connected to things having to do with, like, traffic and things of that nature. What I have found to some degree is these larger sort of moratoriums seem to be connected to things about, like, you know, not having access to water, or, you know, sewer system failures. And so, I didn't see any examples of something like this, where a moratorium, a very comprehensive moratorium, was connected to, was reasoned, as this is being reasoned. So, are there examples that you guys know of that we would use as a template?
So, I can fill in on a recent example, and I'm sure Bill can chime in as well, but Palo Alto did do a similar type of moratorium a few years ago when they noticed that there was just an increase in office buildings, primarily in the downtown area. And so, they imposed a, you know, non-residential moratorium on office development. That moratorium, in fact, was then incorporated into the general plan process that was in place at the time, and took the form then of a development cap. I think it was a 30,000-square-foot-per-year development cap. And so, it, and there have been other examples where development moratoriums are predicated on impacts to traffic and quality of life and that type of thing. More recently, we've been seeing moratoriums in the, you know, cannabis arena, or moratoriums against a particular type of use that is not favored by the community. But development moratoriums in general are, you know, have been used as a tool.
And then, my second question somewhat related is, is there some established sort of case law on this? Like, where we actually have examples of courts ruling and giving us, you know, some clarity with these, you know, what we mean, you know, by public safety and welfare, right? Where these things have actually been tested out in the courses? Does that exist or not?
There are certainly some cases in the moratorium field, and then there are other cases in the land-use arena that talk about public health and safety and welfare. Unfortunately, in the moratorium area of law, there is a rather recent case that talked about the requirement for the types of findings. And what happens typically in the land-use arena is that courts defer to the city council in making these findings. There's a lot of deference placed. But in this recent case, the court actually severely, significantly scrutinized the type of evidence that was in front of the city council and didn't give the city council the type of deference that you typically see in land-use decisions. And so, you know, maybe that's an outlier case, but maybe it's because a moratorium is, you know, is a very significant land-use tool.
Was that the case where there was a developer who had a project that, and the city was trying to get the developer? It was quite a ways along in the process, and the city actually tried to increase the housing within the development, and that's, and the court turned that down?
No, I think you're referring to the City of West Hollywood case where the court also did not give as much deference to the city council's decision as we would hope as city attorneys. But it was a charter school decision. City council was, the community was starting to see inquiries about charter schools, and so the city council decided to place a moratorium on the development of charter schools. And in that particular case, there had been no applications filed for charter schools, and so the city didn't think that there was a health and safety threat because there were no applications on file.
Any other questions? No. Councilmember McCarleton, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mayor Pro Tim Taylor.
I have a question, going back to what Councilmember Nash was discussing with you, Bill. Which projects that are on the list that require, require a development agreement?
Oh, Deanna may be better to answer that question.
Certainly. So, there are projects that have received a development agreement that are not on the list. Of the ones that are on the list that are proposing to do a development agreement would be Willow Village, and that would be the only one.
What's the total number of projects? I'm only asking that because the print is very small.
That's a good, total number of projects on, so this list that is before you represents not, so there's projects that have been approved and received a building permit and are under construction. Those are not on the list. What's on the list before you this evening are projects that, they're sort of different buckets. Projects that have been approved but not yet received a building permit, projects that are pending, or projects that have been approved and have a building permit under review, and then there are pending projects that don't have a building permit because they're still under review. I hear 27 total.
I just wanted to go back to a few of the public comments. There were, I believe, a few that were concerned about the Mid Penn project on Willow Road, the 1345 project, which would not be included in the moratorium if we proceeded. Any project that is 100% affordable, I doubt that anybody on this council would support not supporting it. What I have seen specifically in District One is that the majority of the apartments that are being built are not affordable. 735, you would think that at least 70 were affordable, but that's not true. If we have projects that are 100% affordable, we can move forward with it. The majority of the units that are being built are not affordable. $3,000 to $6,000 a month is not affordable. And so, when we talk about building more, who are we building for? We're displacing the current community that is there. They can't afford to rent the units that are being built. And I would like to challenge the, I'm not sure if Rhonda is still here, if we have a vacancy rate for Menlo Park, do we actually know how many apartments are available for rent? Looking at those three projects, one, 777 Hamilton, the second, the one, Elon, and the third being Anton Menlo, what is the vacancy rate? If you can tell me that it's 100% full, then I can consider building another complex. But I don't believe that it's full. So, I don't know if Rhonda is here. She can possibly answer, if anybody would know what the vacancy rate is.
I do not know what the vacancy rate is, but I do know that Rhonda is not here. Okay. Thank you, Starla.
So, if I could just follow up on the vice mayor's question a bit. So, Willow Village is the only one that would require a development agreement of this list? And so, does that also mean that it's the only one that would come before council? Which one of these, is there anything that wouldn't require a development agreement that would have to come to the city council?
Sure. So, I guess, so Willow Village would be subject, they are proposing a master plan development, so that would be subject to a development agreement. I don't think, while the other ones do not require it, I don't think there would be a prohibition that they could propose a development agreement if they would like to do so. The projects that would come before the city council, if there is a rezoning or a conditional development permit amendment, or a general plan amendment, would be the ones that would come before the city council. So, I believe the Citizen M, they're looking, I believe that would be a conditional development permit amendment, a project at 164 Jefferson, they're looking to amend their existing conditional development permit that would come before the city council, Willow Village. And I believe of those that are proposed, I think those are, are those are the ones. The others would be subject to planning commission review.
And this is a, so would there be a way, so as a part of the Connect Menlo Plan, the, you know, planning commission was made, the final decision-making body for a lot of these projects that fell within certain parameters. How would we go about changing that and saying that we don't want it to go before the planning commission? We want the city council to have the final say. Would it require opening up the general plan again entirely? Or is there some sort of addendum change?
So it would typically be a zoning ordinance amendment change because you're not changing the density, you're not changing the permitted uses or what's covered by, excuse me, by the general plan, but you would be setting a different approval process or level of approval.
I have a follow-up question to Councilmember Combs's question. So setting a different approval process, would that be something that the city council would just say to instruct you to do or instruct? How does that work?
So it would be providing direction, instruction to the city attorney's office and a community development of what it was that you wanted to consider. And then obviously, we'd need to have more conversation and discussion about it. Would have to go through a public hearing process before the planning commission and then come back to the city council. But because any amendment or change in a zoning ordinance requires review and recommendation of the planning commission before it can be adopted by the city council. And so it's public hearings before both. And, you know, again, being approved by the city council, some of these projects have environmental impact reports that will be done with them. And so at the, if it's just being approved by the planning commission, they're the final approving body for that. If it has a significant unmitigated impact, the planning commission could adopt a statement of overriding considerations for that. If it was a city council approving authority only, then those determinations are made by the city council. But we'd also have to look at kind of what is the discretionary approval process as well? I mean, it would take some time and thought examination to understand exactly what you're trying to achieve and then to look at it and see how that could be done.
So then, you know, going down sort of the moratorium route again, so if we go down the process of putting that in place, then we also have to like sort of start a process or procedures by which we're reviewing, right? These issues that we say led to the implementation of the moratorium. What does that look like? I mean, what is that? Is that a looking at the zoning? Again, is it opening up the general plan? Is it community outreach? I mean, sort of, I'm getting some sense of, I want to get some sense of like what, you know, because again, the moratorium is just one part and possibly the easiest part of the process. The then sort of actually, you know, sort of creating some procedures or process or programs at addressing why you put the moratorium in place then becomes to me a major issue.
Right. And that's why I was saying with or without a moratorium, assuming the council want, assuming it's the will of the council that you want to reexamine, you know, jobs, housing imbalance or how much commercial development or, you know, what sites that should be rezoned to residential from commercial or higher density residential or, you know, whatever the direction is, whatever the policy direction is that you want to look at or you want to examine, that can be done with or without a moratorium. You still need to provide that direction. You still need to establish the priority. So depending on what the direction is, what exactly you want to look at, it may be amending the general plan, amending the specific plan, and amending the zoning ordinance. Or it may only involve amending the zoning ordinance if you're not, you know, changing the density, et cetera. So part of it is, is the what we want to accomplish, then we figure out how do we accomplish that and what needs to be changed to accomplish that.
Yeah. On that thought, I think that's actually how I'd like to try to organize the discussion tonight. So like what is it that's trying to be accomplished by this? And then at the end, figure out what the mechanism, most appropriate mechanism is. I think that makes, I think that makes a lot of sense to look at, okay. I mean, obviously, it's very obvious, I think, the jobs housing is, when I looked at, I mean, when I looked at all of the whys, I had the very same question for the moratorium. I understood the whys. I wasn't sure I understood the tool. So we can go ahead and go through that. And there's reasons for that that we can talk about. Yeah. So moratorium is a, a moratorium candidly is for a duration of time. All right? So for instance, with Willow Village, I know there's a lot of concern about Willow Village. Willow Village is off in the distance and we're ultimately going to be the body to approve that. But if you put a moratorium in place, it's kind of like from a strategic standpoint as a council, you have a limited duration of time that the moratorium is in place and all of the work still happens in the city. You can't legally preclude it, right? So all of that work is taking place. You have a moratorium and then the moratorium ends, all right? But you still aren't anywhere near the approval time for Willow Village. So then Willow Village comes and now you've set yourself up with the public to say, well, we had a moratorium, what did you accomplish during the moratorium? It's kind of like two boats going side by side and you just fired your cannons early. Like what was, instead, and not only that, but you had your staff completely engaged and your public engaged in this discussion about moratorium, when really during that whole time period, what you could have been doing is being engaged in a general plan review process and keeping staff engaged in that. And in a way that, so that when you get time, so there's like, it's a timing thing. So then when it gets down to the very end. And what I'd propose honestly with Willow Village is I'd propose, Cecilia, I mean, and Betsy, you guys be on a development team agreement.
But it does not-
But let me finish. So when you get down to the very end, then it comes time to, all right, during this whole time period, we've been actually engaged in it and engaged in a process that's, it's going to take place anyway. The Willow Village process is going to take place anyway, whether you have a moratorium in place or not. All right? That's the thing. It's not, you're not stopping the process. All you're doing is you're saying early in the process, where you're giving an impression to the public, you've stopped it and you haven't. Because it's not going to be, we're not even going to be to approvals on Facebook Willow Village until probably like 2021. So why would you do a moratorium now when they haven't even submitted an EIR?
Because this is so much bigger than Willow Village. This is about the entire city, but I will let-
No, but we'll talk about that because when you look at all of the other, you have the same issues with some of the other projects. What you can do is you can go ahead, like Drew was just talking about, is you can say, okay, we're going to open up the general plan process. We're going to open up the specific plan process and we're going to start and we're going to readjust our council priorities, start working on them right now. Because this doesn't stop any of those processes. It doesn't stop any of those projects. So what we do is, and I, guys, I want to say, I really appreciate the fact that this is teed up. But the question is, are we using this tool appropriately? Or is it better to say, let's go ahead, start the general plan review right now, start the specific plan review right now, let's use our staff resources in a way that's actually going to go ahead and achieve those goals, rather than create this expectation that somehow we're stopping a process that isn't stopped?
Mayor Mueller, whenever you're, I don't mean to interrupt this, whenever you're done, I'd like to say something.
Yeah.
I think what you said was extremely eloquent, extremely well said. I'm concerned for the same reason and the fact that the process continues while the work is done by the staff. Potentially, we have to bring on more staff to do the extra work of the analysis, which honestly should be done anyway. And that, when it's done in the EIR, it's paid for by the developer, not by the city. And I don't want the city, the council to have to play catch up in addressing the issues that come to light during the process. The process, there is a process that, you know, I'm probably never going to vote on Willow Village, to be honest with you, because as you said, it's going to take years to get through the EIR and the development agreement. And that's, the EIR is there to bring to light and to give us ammunition to be able to say, we don't think this is going to cause problems with traffic or the air pollution or whatever. It is going to cause this much traffic. And it gives us ammunition to sit down. And just because they do an EIR and just because they go down that development agreement, we still have the right to say no. We can still say, no, I'm sorry, these are the impacts and we're not going to live with these and you're not going to build this. Just because we do an EIR does not mean it's approved by any way, shape, or form. And I'm deeply concerned about the traffic. I'm deeply concerned about the cost of housing. But as Glenn Rojas pointed out, the moratorium can stop what's going on in Menlo Park, but it won't stop the regional development. And the majority of the traffic on Willow and El Camino and across the city is traffic going from one city to the other. And I want us to really, really address that as much as we can as we move forward. And I'm looking at my notes.
Yeah, but Cat, can I just finish, please?
Sure, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I thought you were, sorry, go ahead.
So, so anyway, so my concern is about the tool because what's looming, the other thing about the moratorium that has me concerned is that, is SB 330.
Absolutely.
So right now, Senate Bill 330 has passed the Senate. It's not like it's different than SB 50 was. So SB 50 got hung up in a Senate committee. SB 330 has passed the Senate. It's now had its first reading in the Assembly and it's been moved to its first committee hearing, meeting. What SB 330 do, will do is it's going to lock in place our zoning and roll back our zoning to Connect Menlo at the time it was passed. Now, if we, on the residential, okay? So if we do, and basically, so we have two choices as we frame this. So what we can do is we can go ahead and open up Connect Menlo and start working on our issues in Connect Menlo. Or we can go ahead and say, we're going to do a moratorium on certain types of residential in the Connect Menlo area and our general plan area. What that will do is that will tell Sacramento that SB 330 is necessary because it's being specifically written for this circumstance. And we will make it more likely that it's going to come down on us and you'll get the exact opposite result that you were trying to get by reopening this discussion of Connect Menlo. I mean, candidly, that's why SB 330 has been written, for this exact circumstance. And we're going to, we're going to be saying to the state legislature, we just put a moratorium on housing next to, not only on housing, but housing next to a major jobs center. But you can have the same discussion without the moratorium. The exact same discussion. And the big, the big projects that are coming, such as, for example, Gray Star, would, that project wouldn't even be up for approval by the time the moratorium would probably end. So you get to have the exact same discussions, you don't fire the cannon early, you don't set up so the state legislature is using us as the reason why SB 330 needs to pass. And we have our staff focused in the specific areas that we're trying to have them work on.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment, Mayor Mueller. And just to kind of go back a little bit and revisit a little bit of history here. A few months ago, when we did have a Connect Menlo review, a lot of issues came up because the fact is that I'm deeply concerned about breathing. I'm deeply concerned about my community continuously coming to this council and bringing up the same issues. And if we don't take a progressive action, then I believe that my community will take legal action against the city of Menlo Park. The fact is, is that our community has absorbed the majority of the development in Menlo Park and my community has had the least reinvestment. The concern for me and the reason why I'm asking for a moratorium, because it's the only way to wake people up, to understand what you've done to our community. None of you come over there on a regular basis. I challenge you to spend 90 days, get an Airbnb, rent an apartment, because there's plenty available, stay 90 days, live, work, and play in District One. And then come back to me and tell me that you don't agree with how the community feels. There are things that have been done there that no one sees because you don't live there. And so I'm going to read what I came here to read. Because we don't have an infrastructure plan.
But I want to be-
We don't have an infrastructure plan, Ray.
Cecilia, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Economic investment for a community in crisis. Climate crisis, housing crisis, development crisis, environmental crisis, sea level rise, city services, reinvestment, traffic enforcement, economic opportunity, health and safe development agreements to protect communities of color, senior communities, and unprotected classes. Air quality and traffic impacts. Approximately 70,000 cars cross the Dumbarton Bridge Monday through Friday. The Bell Haven neighborhood is surrounded by Bayfront, Willow Road, and the 101 freeway. What is our air quality count? Who knows here? The air quality district is initiating an update to its current California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. There have been substantial changes to the data and assumptions underlying the analytical methodology, threshold, and mitigation strategies since the last update of the SEQUEL guidelines in June of 2010. SEQUEL was revised May 2017 and 2018. There are 2019 guidelines. Does the city of Menlo Park use them? There has been no consistent monitoring or requirement to monitor air quality within the adjacent residential neighborhood of Bell Haven. Air quality monitoring must be done by voter precincts or district rather than zip code. Menlo Park has failed to ensure an environmental justice approach as outlined by the United States Environmental Protection Act. Jobs housing imbalance. Menlo Park has not conducted a current housing study that identifies the number of apartments and homes occupied, reserved for Airbnb, reserved for corporate rentals, or otherwise unavailable to the public. The city has not created an ordinance to determine the number of vacancies in the current units in the city of Menlo Park. We do not have an accurate count of the number of vacant apartments in the city of Menlo Park. There have been 735 apartments built in District One. How many in District Two? How many in District Three? How many in District Four? How many in District Five? Currently, the zoning laws in Menlo Park allow for 40 units per acre in the downtown specific plan in some areas of Menlo Park, but in District One, it's at 100. Because of the district plan, because of the general plan, Connect Menlo update, our district was upzoned in the light industrial to get the maximum out of every inch of the space. At this time, the discussion on moratoriums is to provide general information and education to the council and the public. Also, we will give direction to the city attorney on options. Here are some basic facts about Menlo Park. The Bell Haven neighborhood was annexed in the Menlo Park over 70 years ago, but visibly you cannot tell. The last elected official from the Bell Haven neighborhood was over 40 years ago until myself. We do not share healthcare districts with Menlo Park. We do not share congressional districts with Menlo Park. We do not share school districts with Menlo Park. And the Bohannon properties are in the Redwood City School District. How complicated is that? I believe equitable development is achievable. I am very, very hopeful with the city of Menlo Park, with our current council and with our city staff, that we can achieve equitable development. It's a strategy that ensures everyone participates and everyone benefits from the economic transformation. It requires intentional and thoughtful focus in eliminating the inequities in the city and barriers. Good governance in land use, good governance in zoning, policy, and programs provides a healthy and safe neighborhood. Good governance also provides a voice and influence in the decisions that shape our neighborhoods and cities. Good governance also provides air quality mitigations. Good governance also provides circulation mitigation. Good governance also provides circulation mitigations. And that we have not seen, and that is why I am requesting a moratorium in District One.
Okay, so, and I, no, because I'd like to respond. Mayor Protim Taylor, I'm not arguing any of those points. My point has to do with what the mechanism is upon which to go ahead and achieve the things that you're attempting to achieve, and what is actually like the most efficient mechanism to do that. It's not, I understand very much that the conversation, all, I'm not arguing with anything any member of the community said, whether from Bell Haven or anywhere else, with respect to the impacts. I voted against Connect Menlo, all right? I voted against it. But as I sit here tonight, what I have to say is, the zoning is in place now, and where we are with Sacramento is where we are with Sacramento. And we have to look at what is the most strategic mechanism possible to obtain the goals that are trying to be achieved by the city. That's my, that's my only point. My point is, if you fire the cannons early on a moratorium, you fired the cannons early on a moratorium to no effect. So I'm actually trying to be helpful to what the goals are that are trying to be achieved. Councilmember Nash.
I just want to add two more things to Cecilia's list, and that is, sports teams are separate for the parts of the city as well. Bell Haven does not share the sports teams with the rest of Menlo Park. And one of the biggest concerns that I've seen in the Bell Haven area is that in an emergency, there is no way to get out of the neighborhood. It's not even a traffic issue. It's, if you tried to empty the district quickly, it does not have the same access as anywhere else in Menlo Park. With the Dunbarton corridor, there's a real problem with getting out of the neighborhood. The only ways to get out are, there's three roads to get out, in and out, and it's, there's a significant safety risk there, which I think is, needs to be addressed.
Right. So the question is, what's the mechan, what's the mechanism to address it? So, and that's the only, so that's the only thing I'm hung up on, is not, guys, I care, I care all, I, number one, I appreciate very much that you guys are raising the issue impassionately. I care about, I care about your opinions as council members. I'm in the same place as you. I want to help solve this problem. The question is, what's the, what's the best way to do that, okay? If like, and so it's, it's, if you say the way to do that is moratorium, but moratorium has no effect in achieving that goal, then the question is, what was the point of that? But if I, but if I put you, for instance, so if you, if you put a moratorium, for instance, on the housing that you're talking about putting in, in the Bayfront area, and that has the effect of causing SB 30 to come, 330 to come down incredibly hard on us, was that the effect you wanted? Or if what we said was, okay, we're going to go ahead and we're going to open up Connect Menlo and start really looking at how housing is being done in this area, and guess what? The two people who are going to be in charge of that conversation, which we're going to start immediately, are the two of you. Which is going to be more effective in achieving your goal? And especially if we do, as Councilmember Combs has said, and we bring back the approvals to the city council, what was more effective in the goal? If we say that we're going to go ahead and look at, so for instance, so, you know, with Facebook Willow Village, if we say, okay, both of you are going to be on the Development Agreement Subcommittee for that, so, because, and so you're going to be the ones, you're going to be meeting with the stakeholder to make sure that community benefits are delivered to stakeholders in Bell Haven, all right? You're going to be in charge of that conversation, and guess what, guys? I've never been on that committee. I've been on this council seven years, never once was selected for that committee, and it has a lot of power, all right? Like, it comes, the Development Agreement comes to the council as blessed, and that the project's good, and it's a tough position as a council member to say, you should have asked for this more, all right? You'd be on that committee, working with the stakeholder through the process, and guess what? A moratorium isn't stopping that development, because it's going to be long after that development comes up for approval. So you get the desired result that you're looking for. Plus, you get to talk about all of the, the traffic, you know, transportation, and everything that's going to come and going to be required to that. Really is, like, it just is. That's the way it works. With respect to the downtown, like, we can make commitments tonight. I, I agree. It's time to do upzone housing in our downtown, to do upzone housing in the downtown. And we can have that discussion, and there's one partner who I can think of, you could probably go talk to, who I can't even, who I'm, for reasons I can't talk about, who might be really interested in doing something different, because they're getting a lot of pressure put on them right now. So I just leave that out there. But my point is, we can handle those, we can handle those, those issues, right? So what, what the, so going back to that question that Bill had asked, what is it about, the question that we really drill down on is, what is it about the tool that we're looking at? What makes it about the tool of moratorium, that that is the appropriate tool, as opposed to saying, we're all going to sit, we're going to, like, in post-haze, open Connect Menlo, the specific plan, and get to work?
Just looking at the number of projects that's on the list, not just for District One, but throughout the city of Menlo Park, it's hard to envision the work that we're proposing to happen with 27 projects on the list just for one area. The city is fast-forwarding, and it's been too much, too fast, too soon. And we don't have an infrastructure place, an infrastructure plan in place to deal with anything related to mobility, related to traffic and transportation. We don't have things in place. And so if we continue to move forward, I don't see how we can do all of that, considering that our staff is already at capacity.
So, but we're going to have--
And just as a public statement, this is not about Willow Village. This is just about development in Menlo Park. It's not about one specific project.
But I'm confused, because if you did the moratorium, we're going to have to do all that work anyway, right? You're going to have to do that work. So, and with respect to one specific area, there's only, there's 12 projects in District One, all 27 aren't there, that I'm looking at here on this that I was providing to us.
Maybe you should come visit, because there's a lot more going on than people are aware of.
And that's actually one of my concerns, is I think that we need to step back and really get some good data. First of all, on development caps. I've been asking for weeks about what, where are we on the development caps for Connect Menlo? Where are we on development caps for downtown specific plan? Can we get everything in one place where we know exactly what's going on? It's like a bank account. How can we be approving more projects if we don't know how much we have in surplus? This was supposed to be a project that was, this, both plans were supposed to be over 20-year projects. One plan, we're in seven years, one plan, we're in not quite three years. And we are way, way, way beyond an equivalent time, anyway, we're way, I actually don't know what the budget, I don't know where we are. It's really, really frustrating to not know where we are on these plans. I don't know what's truly in the pipeline. We need data. That's one of the reasons why I would recommend we go ahead with the next step for a moratorium on both citywide and District One. We don't have to actually approve a moratorium, but let's take the next step and look at what it would look like. I understand that we've got some state concerns. We are actually trying to get more housing in the city. We want to look at it across the entire city. I'm concerned that if Cecilia and I get stuck on a Subcommittee, that we will be out there, and that the rest of the council will not be coming along with us. And we need to have the entire council looking at all of this, and being partners with us, looking at the data, trying to move the city ahead, trying to get the quality of life that we were voted in for. There's three of us who were just voted in. I believe that it was a strong message that resident quality of life matters. That's what we're trying to do. This is a step in that direction.
Guys, so I don't have, I agree resident quality of life matters, and I, I do visit Bell Haven, and it's not like an attack on either of those things. And I'm not suggesting that somehow the two of you would go off on a Subcommittee alone. For the Development Agreement, Facebook Willow, Bill of Willow Village, that would make, that's actually a primo assignment. But, but in terms of doing the Connect--
But again, it's beyond Willow Village.
I understand, but I was just going to say that with respect to the general plan review and the specific plan review, that would be something that we would all do together. That would be like, we would readjust our council goals and priorities, and be working with staff on that, basically, for the rest of the year. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, and this is sort of my question to Councilmember Nash and Mayor Protim Taylor, and again, very much appreciate you bringing this discussion to council. But, but aren't we, if we're being honest, talking about two different things? When we talk about large projects, impactful projects, many of which are being proposed in, in District One, and things like, like we had here, the owner of, of the hardware, Ace Hardware on Santa Cruz, right? And his project of, of, you know, retail, and an office, and some housing. Is there really objections to that? I mean, because, I mean, let's, let's be honest, because that is what was essentially approved and thought of with the, with the specific plan, and, and that of which, which went to voters. And I was on the losing side of that, you know, so, and so voters actually had a, an option to vote on the specific plan, and in, and an option to change it dramatically, and that lost, that went down. And like I said, I was on the losing side of that. And so when I look at projects like what is being proposed on Santa Cruz with the former Union Bank, you know, structure there, I think that that is what people want. And I don't think that I was elected, when we talk about quality of life, to prevent projects like that. It's, it's a small project that is mixed-use, that reflects the evolution that when I talk to people, they wanted to see downtown. So I do think, for me, we have an issue if we clomp it all together and say that every development in the pipeline is, is a problem. And, and we don't attempt to sort of separate out and say that, yeah, that there are, there are different things happening, these aren't, these aren't all apples, some are apples and some are oranges, and, and we really need to approach them as a council with looking at them as, as, as things that are different.
That is exactly what we're trying to do at the next step. The whole idea is to look at what is included and what is excluded. It is not a blanket, we are trying to move projects ahead with the idea that we've got a significant, severe jobs housing imbalance, and we cannot continue to approve offices without also looking at housing. How are we going to get housing at all affordability levels throughout the city? And that's what we're trying to accomplish with this. We are not in any way trying to stand in the way of development. What we are trying to do is hold the city responsible for jobs and housing, and therefore, well, with the city with city policies for the jobs housing. But it's a matter of looking at the project which is being described, where I believe there's two offices and four housing units, may in fact be a poster child for a good jobs housing balance. What we need to do is be able to look at what projects do we actually have in the city? What are we trying to accomplish? And how do we want to slice it, saying, these ones go ahead, these ones don't, without looking at every, and just, how do we do that? We're trying to make it as simple as possible, so trying to get as few exceptions as possible, so that it would be last, it would be as short as possible. The idea is to not, what can we do immediately? What do we need to rezone? What, how do we slice and dice this so that we can get short-term wins, hopefully get some of these projects going? And also make sure that we will, as we go ahead, as we see big office developments, make sure that there's housing that handles--
Look, I'm not trying to be combative at all, and, and, and I want, I want to go there with you, and my heart is there with you, but for me, if you're trying to sway me, I don't see how, like, you can get my support if there is a project of which I think of, that there is limited opposition, and I think it's the type of project that the residents wanted and have wanted and want to see downtown. And if what you're proposing is something that indiscriminately says that all projects must, must, you know, must be put on hold, then it's hard, I'll be very frank, it's hard for me to get, to cross that line with you. It's hard for me to get, it's, it's hard for me to give my support for something that is, is completely indiscriminate and, and its impact on, on projects. Some projects which I think, like I say, I think that the voters in the city want and have wanted for a while, and especially when it seems as though there may be less indiscriminate options, right? More discriminated options of how to, to approach that. And so for me, that, that is, that is a challenge, because again, like, I see a number of projects on this list that seem like, to me, not very controversial, not large in the way of, of impacts, not substantively adding to job housing imbalance, and, and don't sort of bring up some of the issues of, that we're hearing from District One. So, so it's hard for me to get behind a measure that will lump all of that together and say that we just have to put a pause of some sort on it.
So I believe that the, what had been proposed in the staff report was actually that what we would do tonight would be, select a Subcommittee, and I believe Cecilia and I were proposing that we actually have two Subcommittees. One would be looking at District One, the residential, and one would be looking citywide at the non-residential. And what we would do is go ahead with two Subcommittee's, presumably we would each be on one of them, and we would also have another council member on each, so that we'd have two council members on each. And the two Subcommittee's would actually come back to council with a recommendation as to how we would like to proceed with the further discussion of a moratorium, or however we achieve the goals that we talk about. It's, and so what I'm trying to do is actually get us to the next step where we actually have a discussion where we have two Subcommittee's and can further discuss these projects with, and we're not trying to vote, or even, we're just trying to get a discussion of what would be, where would we draw the lines? I personally would leave, and I, I'm not sure if this has been said already or not, would include, would exclude immediately, before we even do the Subcommittee's, public projects and affordable housing projects. I think that those are things that we could, probably all five agree that they should not be included in the group. Beyond that, I think it's a discussion, and would be a robust discussion between, within a Subcommittee and with staff, as to how should we, what should we propose? Because I don't think we would just have a blanket proposal, but I do think that that discussion needs to take place.
So I have a couple of concerns about that. So the, the issue that you run into there is that, so you create this Subcommittee to go ahead and try to decide what you're going to go ahead and exclude, but there's no public process involved in that, right? I mean, so, if, I mean, it goes back to, it goes back to, if you do what Councilmember Combs was talking about, where you bring approvals to the city council, so we're all going to be looking at those approvals, and then you have an open and public process where you're talking about both the general plan and the specific plan, as opposed to, like, a moratorium in, oh, it could be a very sort of two-person discussion with staff about what to exclude or not to exclude. They're just two very different things. And also, I want to talk about, I mean, because, I mean, so there's also some very basic, like, things to talk about, all right? So you say we'd all agree about affordable, we'd all agree about public, okay, let's talk, the list could keep going. What about, what about mixed use? Like, if we shut down, if we shut down mixed use, that's going to make residential development more difficult. So we're going to have to discuss talking about exemptions for commercial at a certain, certain size. And then let's talk about hotels, because frankly, residential doesn't pencil for the city without TOT. We learned that through the jet, through the specific plan. Residential's in that loss for the city when you put that in, so you have to have TOT to balance it out. That's why we had a hotel scheduled to come in through the specific plan. Like, there's just, it's a, it's a much more complicated discussion, so that, so when you're talking about doing a moratorium, the question is, you know, is there, if you're going to pull that card, if you're going to fire that, that big missile, like, is the timing right? the timing right to do that to achieve strategically what you want? And then secondarily, like, what's the mechanisms? Why are you doing that to augment the mechanisms? Right? Like, what is the mechanism that's being augmented in public process to do that? And I'm not, that's what's unclear to me right now. And I care, I care about the same things you guys care about. I want to have this discussion, like, we need to have the discussion about both of these topics. The question is, like, what does doing the moratorium get us extra? And then how does it hurt us? And I see ways it hurts us. I do. I see ways that this comes back and bites us. I'm not sure I see, I'm not sure I see how it changes this process for us in a positive way. And that's my big thing. If I'm thinking strategically, I see, okay, I fired my cannons early, I gave Sacramento a reason to beat up on us. Like, I have, I have a ton of work to do to figure out what am I possibly including that I don't want to include? And how am I, how am I actually making it more difficult to achieve housing because some of these things, some of this commercial I need for housing? Like, it's, the, the specific plan process and the general plan process were incredibly complicated. And when it went off, and at the end of it, I was like, I couldn't get behind, I couldn't get behind Connect Menlo because of the infrastructure needs. I was like, I don't see it. I don't see how the infrastructure gets there. What I will say is that I know there's a lot of work being done on that because that's required for, I think that's even more evident tonight. I don't, you know, a lot of these projects probably are going to be in trouble, you know, two years from now, if it's not there. Right? Like, if I'm an, I mean, if there's one new, if there's one piece of advice to a project applicant here tonight, in that, in the M2, it's like, boy, there is work to do to get these approvals. Right? So, so that's why I'm not, that's why I'm not as stressed about the moratorium as I would, as I feel you guys on. Because I really, because I'm looking at it, and I'm like, man, if I'm a project applicant, I gotta be thinking, how am I getting this approved? Especially because these projects are coming, you know, so, so long from now. If I'm, and to be candid, and I'm just going to be, you guys know me, I'm just flat out, I think you actually hurt yourself for the moratorium on these things.
It's a moratorium.
Right. If you don't care if it's a moratorium, then let's talk about the other thing. Because strategically, I think you hurt yourself. I think you fire your cans early, and a year and a half from now, you will be looking at a voter electorate that will, that when the project comes for approval, the voter electorate's going to look at you and say, you already got a moratorium, so what are you asking for now?
Ray, I think what we're talking about is, we have some goals that we think need to be addressed. There's some issues that we need to, that need to be addressed. If moratorium is not the right process, then let's talk about it. But I think the last thing we want to do is just continue business as usual, and that's what it sounds like.
It's not. So what I think we, what I would propose to you tonight in the place of it is, it won't be business as usual. So one of the things that we were getting ready to do already was we were going to have our mid-year check-in, and that was going to be tonight. So we scheduled this special meeting tonight. Initially, it was not for this. So, and Starla will attest to it, and you know this, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor, we had scheduled this meeting tonight because we wanted to have a check-in on where we were with our council goals and priorities, because we realized in talking to staff, looking at the Connect Menlo, the discussion on Connect Menlo and specific plan and the things that were happening in the city, that we were probably going to have this adjustment, that we were going to have a readjustment, or we were going to go ahead and have to start diving in to the housing issue and to these big updates. And so that was, that was what tonight was going to be a realignment on. And it's kind of funny because we're ending up there anyway, and, but just with a big, flat exclamation mark, which is important. But, but we do that. And so if you still, what I would suggest is, and I'm perfectly comfortable with saying, let's go ahead and put subcommittees on both of these issues to talk about how we frame this up. Let's go ahead and have, let's have that discussion with, when we do our council goals and priorities of how we frame this discussion of doing the Connect Menlo review and the specific plan review, which is going to be, but, but the thing about doing that is, is that that's going to be an engaged process with the community stakeholders involved. Let's, you know, which I mean by the residents. Let's go ahead then and do, let's go ahead and say that, I'm just happy, I know you guys say it's not about Facebook Willow Village, but you know what? I think we should just appoint you guys tonight to that Development Agreement Team. Just put you on it, because I think it's going to be really important to, to residents to know that you're on it. Let's go ahead and, I do, I think it's going to be, you guys don't think so?
I think we need to have a separate discussion of Willow Village before we go ahead with that.
Okay. I mean, I thought that would be something people would be.
Well, I'm happy to discuss it, I'm just not sure this is the appropriate place.
Okay.
And we've, I've already spoken with the developers about my concerns.
All right.
I guess one last comment. Thank you very much. I do appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah.
And it may be fine, I just, it sounds like business as usual.
It's not.
It does.
But I'm telling you, it's not. Like, I've been on council for seven years. It's not business as usual to say in the middle of the year.
If we're proceeding with a development agreement, it's business as usual.
Okay. Development agreements have teeth, like, there's no other, that's like the strongest mechanism you can give someone in planning. It really is. The question is who's at the table, I mean, who, if you're getting your interest into it or not, but, so the, so the.
Okay, game on.
Good, like, honestly, good. Like, honest, I can't give you a stronger, like, I'm giving you the strongest position possible for a council member to frame that discussion. If you guys, if my colleagues, if everyone's in agreement on that, like, I think we have the discussion about looking at housing in the specific plan, and we start that right away. And, but these are things that we had already said at the beginning of the year to staff. I'm looking at staff and they're shaking their head yes, because when we said it to them, what they came back and through Starla to say to us was, wow, that's a heap of work that you guys just asked us to do. Are you serious? And that was what tonight's meeting was going to be about, to say to them, yeah, we're serious, we want to talk about it. So we're going to have to readjust some other goals and priorities.
And perhaps get more staffing?
We'll, yeah.
Anyway.
We're going to have to figure that out. But that's the other thing, too, that is unintended. So I like what Councilmember Combs said about bringing the, just looking at bringing the approvals to us in the interim time period. That should give you guys peace that, that that is happening. So that would be a direction I'd want to give staff tonight. I think that's a fair, that is a fair trade-off on what you guys were hoping to achieve, because I think there are projects that will come through that we'll want to look at and say, you know what, if there had been a moratorium, that would have been something that we didn't want to have affected. But the way that we manage that is we look at them.
Councilmember Carlton.
Did you want to say something?
Then we were about to say to them, you know, we're serious, we want to talk about it.
I think your mute is off, Kat, because I'm hearing a neck roll myself. I've talked for a while and it's late. It's 11:11.
Can I, can I speak up? I didn't want to interrupt anyone.
Yeah, go ahead, Kat.
I'm agreeing with you, Mayor Mueller, that I, I really, really, really want to address these issues, and I do not want anyone to take away our ability as a city to make people accountable for what they do in our city when they build, to address the traffic issues, to build green, to make sure that they build it correctly for each neighborhood. And they're going to be doing the EIR, and they're going to be doing the process regardless of what we're doing. I spent this afternoon, because I was really worried how this is going to look, to the same degree you've mentioned, I ended up on the phone with Amy from Scott Weiner's office and with someone from Skinner's office, talking about SB 50. SB 50 is not dead. That's a two-year bill, and it can be voted on as soon as January. And that bill will take away our right to get impact fees to negotiate, to do anything. It'll be billed by right. And she made it very clear. She said the state's taking a bolder role in housing, and if we put together a moratorium now, we would be the poster child for why it's coming back and why it might pass. And I don't want that for our city. I want us to be able to make decisions, the residents to be able to make the decisions, to work with council, to work on these things, because they're right. They have a point, and we need to make things better. And SB 50 and SB 330 both, SB 330 can prevent, is being created to prevent cities from passing moratoriums. And I want to, I want to talk about the issues that we need to address and talk about how we're going to address, as Mayor Mueller pointed out. We have issues that need to be addressed. We all agree, we absolutely have issues that need to be addressed, and we're deeply in need of sitting down and working through these as they go through the process. But we have a process, and I want to make sure that that doesn't get taken away from us as a city.
One last.
Does that make?
Yeah. Thank you. One last thing on the, and that's addressing the point on education. I just, I've stepped in education horribly the last time I stepped in it, but I do want to say, I want to give, so I do think that mechanism of a JPA, as we have this discussion and having money flow into the JPA so that it can then be given to Bellhaven School and Willow Oaks School, is actually a mechanism I would like to explore again. However, doing that, what I would suggest is that I give that, the framework of that discussion over to Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Taylor to speak with the community about how to best deliver that. But I cannot figure out another way to take money from development and give that to the school district in a way. So I don't care if there's limitations on it only goes to those schools. I don't care, like, all of that stuff, like, let's work it out. But I do not want to come out of Connect Menlo, the general plan, and not have figured out a way how to help those two schools. Just, I just, it's going to be such a lost opportunity, and there's a mechanism put in place that we can do that with an ongoing increment. And that won't affect the ability of those schools to move districts or do whatever that anyone wants to do, it's just getting support to those two schools. And there's a whole lot of money flowing through that we can do that with. So where are we? Are we, do you guys, are we okay? Bill? Kara?
What are you asking?
All right.
Do I know where we're going with this thing?
Yes, so, question is, can we do, so I think there's agreement, is there agreement on everyone that we want to bring approvals to us?
So, I mean, I think we need to look at what that means, and so it's looking at the specific plan language, it's looking at Connect Menlo language in terms of what those approvals are, and coming back and, we just have to sit down and look at it and see what that means. It's not as simple as just saying everything, so.
But it's achievable.
There, yes.
Okay.
But it, it's going to require some work in figuring out what it is and how it would apply, and so we have to sit down and look at that, and then we can bring something back as a framework and say, yeah, this is what we want you to go do, and then we can really move it forward. I mean, so that's one thing.
Okay. Next thing, subcommittees and the way that you envisioned it. Councilmember Nash, do you guys want to point people to those subcommittees? Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
In an effort to work towards accountability, transparency, and equity, I want to make it clear that I want to amend Connect Menlo since we're not moving forward a moratorium. So I want that to be a priority in whatever subcommittee that we're creating. Also to discuss the underinvestment in the Bellhaven neighborhood, and also to look at revenues. There has been a huge financial impact to the city of Menlo Park based on what's happening in District One, but you do not see that money going back in any small percentage or an equitable percentage. And so I still want to address what I just read in that subcommittee.
So Lynn, let's do it. So everyone in agreement that we'll look at those issues?
Yeah, I was just asking clarity so we can have it out there for the Mayor Pro Tem. Like, amend Connect Menlo in what way? So what are the, just so, it's very clear, what are sort of the top three things you want to accomplish in that, that process? So, you know, we're all on notice.
And we're not saying we're going to do it tonight, we're saying we're going to start a framework for the discussion. Because we have to have community input.
Right. Well, you've had community input, and you've had it, I believe. We've heard it on two or three separate occasions in a public forum. I would like to see the number of housing units per acre reduced, the zoning changed, and the amount of development that has been approved based on the Connect Menlo. Connect Menlo was a two-year process according to what Deanna said earlier, and the downtown specific plan was a five-year process. But yet, the Connect Menlo process was a general plan update when it was a strategic plan. There are certain things you do for a strategic plan for a community, and that wasn't done with Connect Menlo. What that is, I can't give you one, two, three, but I know that that's what happened.
All right, so we'll have a subcommittee look at the issues that have been raised by Mayor Pro Tem Taylor to go ahead and frame that up for a discussion at council in the Connect Menlo review process. So.
And who's going to be on the subcommittee?
Good question. So who wants to serve on the council, on the subcommittee? So obviously, Mayor Pro Tem Taylor, I know you want to be on the subcommittee. For looking at the, the issues that were just outlined in Connect Menlo.
I think I'm probably not the best person to look specifically at some of the upzoning as it relates to Connect Menlo because of.
It'd be downzoning housing.
Yeah, yeah. So, but looking at the upzoning that Connect Menlo did, right, to relook at that, I don't think I'm the best person for that.
All right. Are you interested or no?
Sure.
You don't have to, if you don't want to.
I'm really gun-shy after the last round, to be very honest. I just, I, I want to have, I just wonder if it's worthwhile having another individual. I enjoy working with Cecilia, we can do, you know, I'm happy to do it as long as it's.
Let's, let's ask. So Councilmember Carlton, are you interested in working on the subcommittee?
No. Can I actually, on that other piece of it, I was actually hoping that you, Ray, would be, would work on citywide with me.
Sure, happy to do that. So, and honestly, like, yeah, happy to work on the citywide. I'm, so, and I'll be, like, I'll be candid, like, and so, full transparency, I am, I'm going to have to be convinced to downzone housing. Like, that makes me nervous. I'm happy to talk about upzone housing, downoz, downzoning housing, and I understand why, and we're going to have that discussion. My, my concern is the, I cannot figure out how to get, exclude. So right now, what I think that we're missing terribly is inclusionary housing. All right? So when we've talked about in the past about the issues of displacement, like.
People who are, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The people who are being displaced are not the ones being housed in these, in these units that are being built. And go visit the sites that are being proposed, go there in the middle of the day, and you'll understand. A hundred units per acre is too much for any community. Upzone downtown for a hundred units per acre and see how it feels. Forty units to me is, is fair, and that's what's, that's the zoning for downtown. So we should have the same zoning. It shouldn't be more in that area, especially when we don't have access to adequate, adequate transportation, we don't have access to all the cow trains, we don't have access to that.
You know what? You just told me, I'll do it with you. So I'll do both, that's fine. I'm happy to dive in with Cecilia and try to figure it out with you. So, challenge me, let's figure out what we can figure out.
Okay, so I just want to examine, so I heard two parts of the subcommittee task with Mayor Pro Tem Taylor, and that is to look at kind of her list of issues related to District One as well as housing. But if, if you're on the other subcommittee, which is looking at citywide at housing and potentially jobs-housing imbalance, my concern is that there may be an overlap and that we could potentially have.
A Brown Act.
Brown Act issue.
Do you want to take, you want to take citywide out of it and say everything, everywhere but District One? but District One? All right, so then we have no overlap.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Ray.
No, no problem. I mean, we're trying to, you hear the quiver in my voice, because I'm like, I don't know where I'm going to find the time, but we'll do it, but we'll, but I'm making a commitment, we'll get this, we will, we will work on this. So, all right, so, so we have those items done. What else did we say that we would? Those are the two items that we're framing up for the, so then, it's also then sitting down, the Mayor Protem and I sitting down with staff and looking at, coming up with a recommendation how to rejigger our council goals and priorities for the year so that the work plan is appropriate for staff, with clear guidance, and then bringing that back to the city council, so that that will be approved. And we need to do that post haste because it affects our budget, which is why I moved the budget, because I had a feeling that our budget would probably be affected and might need to be readjusted from this discussion this evening.
So I think this gives us, gives us lots to think about. We will be presenting the budget with three separate, I think, at this moment, three separate recommendations for the council to consider. So that's achievable. But I think we will really need to understand the framework of, that the two subcommittees come out with to understand the workload to the staff, and then to rejigger the goals and priorities. So we just, we need to make sure we understand what our commitment is in terms of the future work of the staff on the, the work outlined by the subcommittees.
All right. To project applicants who are here, what I encourage you to do is continue to work hard with the community and with council members to make sure that amenities are coming out of these projects. Because I am, I've been on council now, I said, for seven years, and this was a tough hearing tonight. Like, this is one of the tougher hearings I've watched. So, but that being said, I think that what was said earlier in the year to some applicants was, council's going to hold you to commitments you make. It's pretty clear tonight, council's going to hold the project applicants to the commitments that they've made to the community. And so, so that being said, Councilmember Combs.
So do, do we need a motion on this at all, or no?
I don't, I think we're all in agreement on where we are, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think you need a formal motion, because you, you have, by consensus, have appointed the two subcommittees, and then the two subcommittees are going to kind of frame with staff, you know, input, kind of what the work program is going to be for each one of those tasks. So kind of to, to make sure, repeating what I think was said, we're going to go forward with the budget basically the way it is for adoption next week, and then there's going to be a budget adjustment presumably later when these tasks are determined, and, and come back with the priorities again later after these two kind of work tasks are determined to establish the priorities. Is that?
Councilmember Nash.
I was wondering, what is the best way to get some of the data? I understand that it's, you've got so much going on, but it's something that I think is really basic to being able to start on this process.
So we definitely have some of the data that you've asked for, for example, the specific plan data, it is now available online, we posted it, in terms of the development cap and what is remaining. Connect Menlo, we have it, it was presented in the staff report from March, but we can certainly present it in a more digestible format, similar to what has been presented for the specific plan, so that you have it, and then we can look at, provide it citywide.
Is it possible to get it with more specific, and I haven't seen what you've done, so thank you. Is it possible to get the specific projects and what projects are, where we're adding, where we're subtracting, and actually going back to the beginning of the, where we set the development cap, so that we know where, where we've been spending to the, if you understand?
Yes, so certain, the specific plan does date back to its adoption, so it's deducting the totals from, from 2012 when it was adopted. And then we can look forward with the Connect Menlo area as well.
So where are we, just if you can give us a?
Sure. So with the specific plan, as of now, and numbers do adjust, so number of, so with total entitlements approved and proposed, we are at 94% for the non-residential square footage, and then for the new residential, we're at 75%. And then, I don't have, I apologize, I don't have percentages, I do have sort of square footages in development remaining under the general development cap. So, for example, in non-residential square footage, there is approximately 2.2 million remaining. And then for residential units, there's about, I believe, 2,400 remaining under the development cap. 1,500 of those are typically associated with corporate housing, though.
And we can, at some point, soon, we can get those exact numbers and really being able to see our?
Yes. We'll do my development.
Just want to put on the record that I do want to talk about the inclusionary housing requirement, so, for affordable housing. Just put it now, it'll come out in the subcommittee work that we do on both subcommittees, so I might as well say it now, in that it would be triggered by density to within those projects. I agree right now, we're not getting enough of it, just not. And I've talked to enough, I've seen enough projects in other jurisdictions to know that it can pencil. So we're going to have a discussion about that, so I might as well put everyone on notice. Any other, any other comments tonight, guys? I want to thank the public, this was an incredibly respectful conversation this evening. It was empowering to all of the community members that everyone gave that amount of respect to each other. It doesn't always happen, but there's a, actually, there's a pretty good tradition of it lately in Menlo Park, and it's something to be admired and, and continue to be revered. It makes it a lot easier for all of us to do our job, and it contributed a lot to the discussion, so thank you to everyone, thank you to staff. And I think with that, I'm going to say that before we bring back the council budget item, I'm going to continue that, because I think staff needs to look at that in light of what we talked about tonight. Anything, anything else tonight? Thank you, Kat, I know it's quite late where you are.
Thank you very much for your leadership. It was a tough meeting, and you did a good job.
Oh, that's kind. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn.